Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 21st, 2025 meeting of the Town and Land Planning Board. We have the poster and meeting agenda. I don't know if there are changes. I don't believe there are any, but I'm going to present them. So the agenda will stand as poster. You received Jim's meeting notes. Do you have any questions, comments? If they are not, can I have a motion to approve the meeting notes?
Motion.
Motion. All those in favor? Aye aye. Close, extension, motion for errors. We do not have minutes this evening, so we look for those at the next meeting at the likely two sets of that time. Any correspondence or announcements? And we are all here. So, oh, so wait, no, we are all here. There we go. All here, so we have a quite complimentary meeting. So we will start this evening with the new application. That is Martin Kemp and Charles Street Site Plan Special Use Permit for patio EV charger and motor.
Will you be able to come up?
Yes, please. Come on through the microphone and confirm the description of what you'd like to do.
Okay, so this is actually a retroactive one because I wasn't aware. Yeah, plenty of mention in this one, so I apologize for that. But yeah, I've had a few, a couple of things. One is an EV charger installed. One is a retaining wall, which is that kind of extra lighting roll thing you can see there. It tapers out some photos. And the patio as well as the cherry there. So that's where I have done. And there was some photos, I think, in somewhere in there. Yes. Beautifully oriented, if I'm incorrect. Ah, there, that's a panyu again, so it's the top there. This is a topography, so there's a little bit of the radiator on there, which is actually why I had the retaining wall put in. Because a whole lot is sloping towards the house. I just was getting water in my basement. I felt like it wasn't really helping having slopes. So we kind of flattened them and put this small retaining wall, it's about that fine. And there you can see it. Kind of papers off there. And then skip over the land. And we're enjoying planting some bulbs in the area behind the wall. And that's sort of a view as far as looking out Corning Street, so left. You can see there's a nice gap there, which is for the state house. And now some planting, which is what it looked like before. Before the end of 2025. And then the EV charger is just a toolbox for my, for my partners. And then I'm having some door replacements done. This is just informational because I don't want to get caught in this bind again. So there's just a one for one replacement. Bank repairs because they're all kind of falling apart. Particularly this time of year, the cold coming through that front door is very bad.
The doors have already been replaced?
No, the doors haven't been replaced. Oh, actually, the Bilco door just got bumped to the, to the downstairs, to the basement. But Arizona, that's basically, it was non-functional because I had to get something done before the weather came in. That's it.
Okay, Jim?
Right, so, you know, as I mentioned, work is already in, with the exception of some of what we're looking at here on this slide. We don't have a full site plan. What was submitted for a site plan is what was shown here is the application request to be able to put sections in the site plan. Essentially, then, mean this sheet replaces the site plan and everything else in the packet, which also included. And there's a 2D, this kind of rendering, and then this as well. So that's an item that we will have to discuss. Whether the board's okay with the waiver request. This property is historic property. It's actually on the National Register Historic Places. So I think that would be something we need to discuss related to the doors and historic integrity. Essentially, since the work's been completed, the board needs to assess that the work done is acceptable and appropriate for the site, or if any modifications or need to be done if anything is inappropriate. And then I did note, and you know, you just noted that we did see this pre-conference back in May of last year. And there's a little bit more work here proposed that we'll just discuss the pre-conference meeting. That includes the basement door, associated basery work, landscaping that was done above the retaining wall. It's not discussed back in May. There's the front door, rear door to the basement, rear door to the mudroom, that all have been added as well. And then obviously, we have the pictures of that. So all of that, you know, needs to be discussed as part of the application. It's not, it's a big deal, but it wasn't discussed as part of the pre-con. I certainly appreciate you coming to this, you know, to say that you're going to do that work now, so we can discuss that. I do think some of the forms may need to be updated because the work proposed is a little bit more than what was on your forms, the site plan form and things like that. This is National Register House, so I do think we need to make sure we, you know, just make sure that the forms capture all that that's going to be done. The other thoughts were, you did put in new plantings. I don't know if you know what you planted, but typically, we like to list the plantings and planting plans. So you know what's there is to make sure they're on a basis and make sure that they are appropriate for the location. One thing I don't have in here is kind of like an after picture here. We had asked, you know, one of the things we had asked for was a letter from the Highway Department to make sure that they were okay with retaining wall, locations in the road, that it didn't seem that it's potentially being conflicts and also like that. We want to make sure.
How work it out?
Oh, you have to contact the Town and Highway Department. And ask them to just go out and take a look, and then they'll probably send you an email.
Okay, sure.
If there are any issues. But they'll take a look at it. Usually, we'd like to take a look at it, you know, if you did put any landscaping here, I don't know if you did. We want to look at that, you know, just make sure it's not going to be an issue. Typically, you want to keep things clear from this up here in the road. So did you plant anything?
There's a cherry magnolia tree, which is kind of basically level with that end of the wall.
So you planted a tree in the side?
Yes, it's a small container tree. Yeah, it's in front of the wall.
Between the wall and the road?
No, 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 it's sort of.
Oh, in here, okay. So have Bob take a look at it just to make sure he doesn't have any issues with anything related to plumbing or maintenance or anything like that, related to the street. And then the only other thing I did just want to bring up as a question is that during the pre-con, we talked about the garage we have on the property.
Yes.
We needed a repair, and I didn't see that in this application. That is actually also part of the National Register listing, and it is a historic property, a structure on the property. So I don't know if you just had any thoughts on, or does the answer, what are the plans by you or not?
It's just very complicated, so, and I don't have a huge amount of time to spend on it. And I'd love to buy it with my neighbors, but it requires a lot line adjustment. That was actually the reason why this took so long, because I was trying to deal with this in one go, in one big application. But then I got out of court summons unexpectedly. So obviously, I have to steep this bit up and not do the opposite. So that will come at some point, but it just requires a lot of work and I haven't had time to do it, so, yeah.
So are you planning for the garage, just to leave it as is?
I was still, well, for now, yes, I'm not doing anything with it because I don't own it. So I thought I'd kind of go through that process of doing the lot subdivision and then dividing of that and then merging. There's just a lot of steps, and I talked to Oliver Loire about that, and so it's just. It's mostly relevant, that's all I have.
So the garage, although it is intentionally.
Yeah.
So it's the house, it's not on the property?
I thought it was on the property, but the property line is through.
The property line goes literally through the garage. So there's a slither of it, which is technically on my property, and then a bulk of it is on the property behind me. So whenever the lot line was done for the, when the church and the house were moved, it drew a line and didn't really think about. You can't even get to it from the other property, so it should really be on the line.
But you don't own it right now?
No. Yeah, so we've got to figure out how to do the lot line.
Planning board members? Any questions?
For the construction of this retaining wall, did you put any kind of supporting in there?
I was constructed by a local contractor.
Right, but did you dig down into the ground or?
A little bit, yeah. It wasn't like a square scrap, so it was maybe, it wasn't hugely deep, because it's not a huge structure.
But did it pour like concrete or is it just the stone wall?
Honestly, I don't know, it doesn't create that much.
And also, is, how does this relate to the, is there an onsite sewage disposal?
Septic, the septic is to go up to the site back.
Yeah, it's septic. It's like septic.
So I think that's the tank. But is there a leak field or a leak drain?
There's no leak source, to my knowledge. The theory is that it may be going to some kind of driveway well, maybe? Or more likely, like that it's probably just going out to the, going out to the still onsite charge, but probably don't make sure.
I think it'd be helpful to have that located on the plan.
And can you go back to the picture of the EV wall? You said that there was keep moisture from going in here.
Absolutely.
What was happening to the moisture? Is it trapped behind the wall or?
Well, it's surface runoff, really. I think people are concerned about sort of the surface runoff, not stuff that was below grade, if that makes sense.
Okay, so there's still moisture that then collects behind the wall?
Possibly. I mean, it's, the point's kind of flattening it, so it's not running all the way through the wall. Soaking into the ground in this place.
Now, you noticed there has kept moisture from your basement, is there a difference now?
My move says how the manager did, as it turned out. But it is possible to get the weight level on the property because prior to this, it was just slowly and straight down, so it's kind of quite untracked.
So there's a break in elevation from one side of the wall, it's like a retaining wall, or it's holding the soil back?
I'd say over here isn't really holding any soil back, but you can see the elevation's slightly higher behind the wall versus.
And is the wall mortared or is it privately?
It's. It's mortared, yes.
The whole thing?
Yes. This was a type of procedure.
And that was, I guess there'll be a site visit, but I did sell this house years ago. So, okay, a little context. Yes, the garage situation is very strange. I remember, I mean, this was like six, seven years ago, so I'm, excuse me, if you speak English, dear. Going back on some memory here, but I recall the lot line being a very strange thing. Clearly, the garage belonged, should have belonged to the house and somehow got screwed up. There was definitely, I recall, sloping, not feeling very healthy for the house. So, well, the solutions we'll discuss in time, but I think having some sort of level ground probably made sense based on the way it was like, the ground was sloping in. And the septic, I really don't recall, but I think it was some sort of a pit system and going out with the gray water act of some sort. If that gives any context, that's what I have to offer.
Thank you.
Anyone else? There was no drainage around the house, if you're aware of it, that would influence the water situation?
No, and it's something I've thought about doing. So I have a sun pump in the basement, which has a lot of water, so we'll do help with some as well. Again, in Wankles, which you might notice plenty of interest in on the water, culvers and springs that are running all over this. So we think that in one quarter of my property, we're intersecting with something there. But that seems like a job for when I find a better answer by finding a garage and thinking about how I might get access to that with right way, where we might look at excavating and seeing what's going on there. But obviously, that's a huge job, so, and I, yeah, have begun to keep sort of, I don't know, I'm pretty involved. So that might be an opportunity to put in some trench drains or something like that to sort out the water that's coming in one step at a time.
Do you have galleries on the downcoves?
I do, yes.
So those are all conducted to some?
Correct, yes, they will, they will move a small way away from the house as possible. That's actually made a future trip.
It's common, hopefully.
Yeah, yeah.
And you gotta go a considerable distance away.
Exactly.
Just because you did mention future work, pretty much anything on the right lip requires planning or review. Exceptional immersive repairs. So just keep that in mind.
I have to say on the call, Jim, I know that you've been doing it as retainers, and like, one night has passed, and when we have projects like this, and I think we've got to meet with him. We've got to talk to him about, about the wall proximity to the street. But he also is very interesting, he comes on with water and septic in mind. So I want to remind us that we have these kinds of situations where he's asked to briefly have a pattern of his. In this case, I'm not sure. If there's nothing else, I think we've already on draft resolution.
The draft resolution for the planning board's consideration tonight for the application by Martin Kemp for site plan special use permit under town code chapter 125, those walls 125, 69, for red overlay for approval. Work already done, including installation of retaining wall, patio, landscaping repairs to the basement door, well, work to the basement door, associated basery work, installation of EV charger and what proposed. Would you close the replacement of a front door, rear door to the basement and rear door to the mudroom at 10 Charles Street? With the RCH, R2 overlay, except the application support documents is out of for review. Posifying actions type two, which coordinated environmental quality review is not required. We'll schedule the public hearing for February.
Which is Tuesday?
Thank you, Tuesday, thank you. We'll send it to the CAV for review, we'll send it to the WAC for review, we'll send this to HAPAC. We'll also send it to County Planning, because it's a site plan. And we will refer it to Bob Boyant at Town Highway, and we'll delegate two planning board members to a site visit.
I'll go.
I'll go. Share your opinion. All right, then, motion on the draft procedural resolution.
Motion.
Motion second?
Second.
Closing paper?
Aye aye.
Close, extension motion for error. Are you sure on the schedule for your touch of the schedule?
Thank you so much.
All right, you will close it. That is the only application for the sleeping, so we will now leave the other period. I'm Paul, and the segment's meeting, first up is Ryan Beck and Equine, 26 WOC land, site plan special use permit, and accessory search. Good evening.
Good evening.
Your question, remember?
Sure. So this project for Ryan Beck and Equine, first off, my name's Ryan Morrison, I'm here from Piem Bond, representing Ryan Beck and Equine Equine for this project. This project has kind of proposed improvements that fall into two buckets. We have pre-existing improvements that were made to the site and were never codified in our site plan approval. And then we have proposed new improvements that we're showing on the site. The pre-existing improvements that were done on the site that weren't on a site plan include two shed row barns, one small storage shed, a trailer parking area, and some site signage, wayfinding signage for vehicular traffic on site. In addition to that, there's proposed new improvements. The proposed new improvements include one new main entrance sign, and then a proposed paddock barn that's about 1,080 square feet, and a gravel access road. We're also proposing landscaping in front of the previously provided trailer parking to help screen it from the front road there. We did have a site walk with the planning board about a week and a half ago, I believe, something like that. We were able to walk the site. I think in general, everyone kind of understood both the pre-existing improvements and the new proposed improvements. The only question that came up that required any action from us was what type of landscaping? Previously in our site plans, we were only showing kind of theoretical landscaping, shrubbery. Since then, we've added some detail to that and provided some cut sheets of the proposed landscaping that we're going to show in that area.
Not a whole lot new. If you did request last time, you guys considered the 40 AM format, you could see the short one, I don't remember seeing that.
We provided a correction probably two, three weeks ago, yeah.
Okay, I just didn't see that, so that's fine. I just wanted to make sure it's under my capable. Doesn't change anything. I know you received CD approval last week of variances, so those are taken care of, so that's, box is checked. And then I know there was a site visit, some affect numbers had some potential concerns. I wasn't there and answered the letters, so I'll give that to others who are there.
Hi, so it's a feature. We did a site visit. The big question was the signage. It's going to replace the sign at the, at the main room. When you enter into the property, the signage that's there is very minimal. I mean, but you need it because otherwise, you're going to let land in the neighbor's front yard or trailer with a horse is going to end up in the parking lot for employees and not be able to get out. And for the dog, there's false signs, there's not that many of them. I don't plan signage that's there as an issue. The paddock, it's, it's a horse paddock. And the gravel driveway going in this, this, also, I don't see a big deal with that. I didn't see it about this one.
No, I'm just, again, the signage looks worse on paper than it did on property, I think this is what they're saying. And then the existing back storage areas for the horses, it makes sense where they put it. They have to prove from CD, I guess, for the building, so it wouldn't make sense for it anywhere else. And I think that the only big question was, obviously, is this historic property in front of it? How do we screen kind of a few trailers that are parked there randomly? There is not space for more than probably three, maybe four, if you got really creative trailers there. Randomly, those trailers do come in and go, especially if people travel far away, drop up off the horses and start taking that trailer back and forth to the farm. So they'll leave them there until they're ready to pick their horse back up. So they're there sometimes a week, a couple of weeks.
Say max, right?
Yeah, a couple of weeks. Yes, right. So it's, but it does make sense to have the trailer parking. I think we're there at nine o'clock in the morning, and the parking lot was due before. So keep thinking about that. But other than that, everything does make complete sense, and the walk through was pretty thorough. We didn't get anything from HAPAC.
Well, it was just, we were contacting Kathy earlier, she indicated she was going to be sending to us today.
Yeah, darkest of days, her biggest concern was the screening.
And where are we with this screening?
So we've, we've added some notes to our screening. I can actually, I don't remember the names.
Just a little light, zoom in, I can't see nothing else.
Oh, sorry. Perfect, so there's a leather leaf vibranium and then a cherry laurel. We've proposed five of the cherry laurels and four of the leather leaf vibraniums. They're pretty thick plants. We've given you guys a cut sheet for those as well, but they should do a good job of screening. They're not massive trees. We tried to kind of strike that right balance between having this massive tree that can, sometimes we've talked about in the site walk. Some of those pine trees are those conifer trees, the bottoms fall out of them as they age, and then they stop screening kind of a trailer level object. So we wanted to find a shrub that gets nice and full, would bloom somewhat in the spring and be pretty to look at. And so these were some suggestions that landscape architects shrubs that we went with.
So just always checking to see if that could be in there for us?
These, these plants should get to about 10 feet in width, and I think they range from like 10 to 20 foot in height, so they should do a good job of screening trailers.
Are they all deciduous?
They are all deciduous. But I believe it's the leather leaf, it gets pretty thick, and it's woody vegetation, so it should still act as a screening.
Is there any other landscaping on the parcel? What I'm, I'm loving is this great line up.
It's not shown well, but if you're on site, and so maybe the folks could, could kind of speak to this. From this point forward is this large vegetative hill. You can't see anything back here from nine. And then as you work your way out this way, there's a stream, and that stream has a lot of woody vegetation on it, as well as, as well as some leather leaf plants, that really do a pretty decent job of screening. When you're out on nine, you can barely know the business is back there.
Yeah, I was going to ask the folks who made the site, does it seem to see traffic on the highway going by? Because I've been by there a few times, and I, I never even realized that it was behind the.
Even from the area where the trailer's parked, it's quite, it's, it's the most open area of the property. It's still quite, we're seeing like tops of cars because of the, there's a little breeze.
Yeah, I think from the highway, you can see the tops of buildings.
Yeah.
And everything else is kind of hidden, definitely behind that ridge.
It is quite, it is quite well hidden, and I, I, it does, it does look weird as a straight line. I think it's really, I think it would be there, it's already. I mean, other than maybe doing like a half circle or something.
People might go to a rendering from the previous.
Okay, that's helpful, yeah, I just have to stay out of the.
No, you think you're doing that. There's that, well, I'm going to do a few.
So this is from their entrance on Route 9, headed back towards the building. And as you can see, we did a rendering of showing the paddock barn, as well as obviously, there's the existing building there. And from there, you, you can even see the trailer parking area or that small shed location.
Planning board members? Questions? Sean, were you, were you talking about the arrangement of what intended planning is?
Well, I was, what I, what I was saying is, it does, it does look, I think, more like a paper than maybe on site. Because you, you also have these hind chains on the front of behind you, that were kind of in front of that area, right? So there's consistent lanes, trees, and then you have all these kind of catsails and all these other. Grassy, whatever you want to call them. So I, you know, I don't, I don't know what another option would be unless they kind of stagger them a little bit maybe, or.
That's something.
If there's not like a planned landscaping on the property, right, that makes sense.
Well, and also, this, this isn't intended as a, as like a hedge, like a private hedge. It's supposed to be just kind of natural seating, wild, and I, I think it's my turn. Vibranium is from.
Yeah.
And that's a destructive, right? But they, they get, you know, really kind of full and wild, and you gotta stay after them if you want it to be ordered. But if it's kind of left to its own, they would seem really spread out.
Yeah, I guess I'll go to Gus, you know, you're going to be the one maintaining this long term, but. Yeah, okay.
We just got a copy of the HAPAC report. It says, "The main intent for HAPAC regarding this project in addition is landscape perfection and important screening of the rear door, tall type pumps that continue as the viewpoint center." And facing Route 9, the project representative indicates that they will employ a landscape designer who will submit plans and planning schedules to protect the beachhead and farm set from the viewpoint center as well as from the new goaling to be erected in the center of the field. There's also an indication from the project representative that they will submit a plan for trailer parking area in front of the property fence to the left of the entrance. Temp break for flying trailers. They indicated this is certainly unacceptable to HAPAC since the further interference of the beachhead. The past, I informed said, if it is deemed to be absolutely necessary, should be placed elsewhere on the property.
I think there was a little bit confusion in that the trailer parking already exists on site today, so there's not a new plan for trailer parking, it's what's already there. And then obviously, the landscaping we already submitted.
I think I would, I think I would agree that there was a misunderstanding of there was a new parking area because on the site that was not communicated. We had a pretty, is that fair? Because would you agree with mine? We communicated, but with that one parking area, the only thing that was communicated was screening. And we even talked about maybe even like a persifera or something that, again, flowers in the spring, but is very bushy throughout the rest of the year and protecting that. I don't want to obviously put words in Kathy's mouth. I think there's a potentially misunderstanding that this is a new one, that it's not the existing one. Because we walked to the existing one and that's heard of it, but during that was screening.
And what was the part about it being in front of the fence?
There's a gate, right, there's a gate here.
Oh, there's a gate there.
Okay, but it's not like there's a privacy fence in the parking is.
Yeah.
And that is palatable. And also the visibility, I really appreciate the need to protect that historic context. A very important house and beachhead, but you know, if you walk to the edge of any property, you're going to see the stuff that's on the nature property. Not a lot you can do about that. So did it strike you that this would be any kind of an intrusion into that context?
It's already there, gate views. I didn't know this until, although the property, I guess, is just one of the, I got through there quite a bit, so I don't, I don't think so, Craig. And I would also say there was absolutely, I can't think of another spot on the property that would only be closer to the sort of structure.
Yeah.
There's, I mean, the property is pretty much maxed out to the rear, which is the back as you see it. I don't know the good location, I guess is what I'm saying, because even if you look, so if you're looking at the main building to the left, which is the only other area beyond that fence line that she was talking about, that's a large hill. That's going, you know, that's a large hill, so it's like you'd have to do quite a bunch of, yeah. Well, that, or you'd have to get boulders there and then flat, which is, I think, even worse, so.
I think there was confusion just based on the way I have to state that we're going to provide new parking. I think it's just the existing parking. Honestly, I think the Catskills do a pretty good job of hiding it from that property to begin with and then the added screening really is kind of like a measure to make sure that we don't impact that beachhead at all.
The lawyer didn't have a plan to drain the wetland.
No plan to drain the wetland.
Pretty good.
Anybody else? We have a quick resolution, but first I want to ask if there's anyone from the public who wish to comment on this application. All right. Could I have a motion to the public? Oh, second, although in favor. Pose a special motion, please.
So approve resolution for the board's consideration for the application by Ryan Beck Deep Line for Site 9 Special Use Permit under Town Code Chapter 125 for construction of the paddock, approving 1-3 accessory structures on the property and assignment for 26 Los In Lane within the RC 5 reaffirming the proposed actions type 2 under secret. With respect to the application for a special use permit, finding the work intended use is consistent with the general standards for special use permits and granting the requested special use permit condition upon site plan approval. With respect to the application for site plan approval, finding the work intended use to be consistent with the Town Code Chapter 125 and approving the application by Team Bond dated November 26, 2024, this is the site plan dated March 8, 2024, with the revision date that I will update to discover when the other day and get that for something else out to you last week. So I put the new update date in there. We authorize the planning board chair to stamp and sign the both site site plan on the applicant satisfaction of the three conditions listed there. And remind the applicant, taking this action, the planning board authorizes the planning board secretary to provide the approval resolution to the applicant along with details on next steps required to finalize the planning board process. And authorizes only enforcement officer and rebuilding inspector to show you the required permits. Reminding everyone, the plan sketches or the materials submitted at time of Ryan Beck Building Department for any required permits, including a CO, as our certificate of completion and most matching materials approved by the planning board.
Can I have a motion now? For both second, okay. Come forward, right?
Aye.
And?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Wait. Quick question, do you guys require a special signature block or do you stamp the signature block on it?
We asked you for the signature block.
Okay, I'll coordinate the question on that. Cool, thanks very much, guys. Appreciate your time.
The next public hearing for this evening is that of Simon Sassenberg, 18 James Street Site Plan Special Use Permit, repairs and improvements.
Good evening, my name is Sean Kemp, I represent Simon Sassenberg, the owner of 18 James Street in Reinhold. We have an application for a special permit and site plan approval. In connection with renovations that may be done to the front porch that was badly damaged by thermite as well as some inherited front steps. And then to update the site plan so accurately, we've got some bluestone that we've added to the rear portion of the property as well as bluestone that my client would like to turn around the perimeter of the buildings. And then there was also another addition to the site plan to show a mini splitment that was installed at the property prior to my client purchasing the property. And the final issue is this request for permission to remove a wellhouse that's located on the property. And the idea there is that once the wellhouse is removed, if it's above, if the structure is above grade, then it would be capped off with like bluestone and re-pointed nicely. If it's below grade, then it would just simply be capped off. My client tells me that that determination cannot be made until the actual wellhouse is renewed. So that's the application in a nutshell. Are there any questions?
So nothing new. Again, I think this is an issue primarily to store preservation, this is a new property itself. But just did want to clarify, I originally came in for porch repair and caracing, now you're definitely taking out the wellhouse structure?
Yeah, that's what we're requesting permission, yeah. That was my second letter, it was a supplemental letter that I submitted after the initial letter, updating it with respect to the wellhouse.
Okay.
The site visit conducted?
Porch was a mess, has asked to be replaced. And they took pictures and they're going to redo the porch as close to the original as possible with the columns and stuff. And the steps are falling apart and they're going to put bluestone on top and make it much nicer. And the sidewalk makes sense and using bluestone will add to the property. And finally, the wellhouses has description as a sore thumb.
What does that mean?
It's just kind of sticks it out, it doesn't match the house.
It's an original?
I don't, I don't believe so.
You weren't able to pull it?
Not able to date it, but just by looking at it, I mean, it has regular shingles on top of it. It looks like it might have been constructed in the seventies or sixties maybe. I did submit additional photographs of the wellhouse. I don't know if direction of you were able to board that to the board. But it's also this, another reason why I don't think that it's, has any historical value is because it's disproportionate to the house itself. It's not, it's not to scale at all. And none of the surrounding properties, immediate surrounding properties had a structure like that. I had a brief discussion with Warren Temple Smith who was at the site visit as well. And you know, when we were looking at the property around, he said that sometimes in the, in Reinhold, there are these wellhouses that have kind of had some historical significance. But in looking at this and looking at the surrounding parcels, there was nothing to give any indication that this had any historic significance whatsoever.
Is it in the National Register?
There must be a sheet on it for this house.
I was wondering if the sheet included a reference.
Yes, sometimes they do.
They usually do, but you were. Unfortunately, we do not have a report from Warren, which was supposed to be submitted.
And there was another individual that attended the site.
Kathy was there.
So Kathy Hammer?
She wanted to tell me Warren was writing up a review and would be sending it. At least you want to.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Tom somewhere said, well, the porch is in, it's in dire need of quick repair. I mean, it just feels really exposed to the elements and was very unsafe. You can see that even before removing some of the boards, that they were dealing with some real issues. We definitely appreciated, you can see that the materials that they saved from the disassembly that will be just put back on the property, which we appreciated. I didn't see any problems related to the stonework they wanted to add. It feels very natural to integrate the property. It's pretty low profile around, around the edge. And then the wellhouse, you know, one of the, one of the comments that, that was made was, you know, a wellhouse provides some, some reference to there being a historical old well there and that creates some, you know, positive historic elements. But that particular house, I mean, did not look original by any stretch of the imagination. And it, I agree, it felt almost out of place. Personally, I felt like regardless of the height of the well, it would be really nice to extend the well with a proper secure grate inside. So you have the feature of acknowledging it being there without this huge structure that feels out of character. That felt like, I felt like I liked the well to be extended regardless of where it is so that we, it could be highlighted and not, you know. Well, I glanced inside, it looked to me like two by fours were basically the structure of it. It just didn't, I didn't see anything, you know, at that picture, they almost look older than what it looks in person. It just, it didn't feel like it looked historic, but I'm not going to act like a specialist.
Can I climb up on my sofa?
Sure. Climb up on your sofa.
Yeah, I'm glad to see, I'm glad to see the photographs and I, I don't want to take issue, you were there at the site visit, but this historic district and this overlay is one of the most important resources in the town and I would really ask that applicants exercise a little more discipline in working in a historic context. You know, we should, we should be seeing plans and some research and some documentation. This, you know, kind of handbrake, oh, it's original, it might have been there in the seventies, but I don't think it's really acceptable for the standards that we have for this historic resource in particular, for the, for the handle of the Reinhold.
Well, that's based on the assumption that this is in fact historic. So if there is no data to support that, what is, what is a property owner supposed to do?
It is, it is located within the historic district.
Does the town or does this board, you've had this application for some time now, have you had an opportunity to look to see if this was historic?
Have you as the applicant?
I did. I looked, I asked my client, I found no evidence of this being historic. I had a conversation with two planning board members. I had a conversation with representatives from what I believe was APAC. And there's no evidence that this is historic. So I don't know how much further I need to go to suggest that this isn't historic. So if there is evidence that it's historic, then that's fine, but I don't think it should be on the property owner to overturn every single stone in order to determine whether or not something that clearly looks like it's not historic is historic. If there's evidence that it is, I have no problem looking into it further, but I think that my client and myself have done sufficient amount of work to make a conclusion on this wellhouse.
And you push my memory. So another, I guess I would agree in looking at it, that I certainly don't think that the roof that's on there now would have been what, would have been if it were historic. That's, that's a fair statement too. But I also agree with Elise that it adds a monumental feature that was important in many of these properties. I can't imagine why somebody would just throw it late in the seventies for no reason whatsoever. It's not like a landscape folly. Did the owner give consideration to asking how it could be built in a more appropriate way or adapted with the, because it seemed, there was some question that it was going to be made, and that were decisions were made that is absolutely don't.
So, so the idea with respect to the wellhouse is based on what my client's contractor after inspecting it said was that if, if the well structure itself is above grade, then we can make it so that along the lines of what Elise was saying, is something that's more attractive and safe. If it's below grade, then there's no real point of trying to salvage it and you just want to tap it at grade so that it's safe. Because my client has young children. So that's kind of where the genesis this came from. If you look in some of the pictures, you can see if you open up that, that top cover and you fall down, you're probably not coming back up. You know, so.
And is it possible, I mean, it's not interesting. So you can't tap it, are you a sewer structure, can you tap well?
Well, I think what my client wants is permission to remove the wellhouse so that a determination can be made as far as what can be done. And in doing that, if it's above grade, then that's something that needs consideration. But I don't think that just putting another wellhouse on there to somehow say that that's now historic, no, I'm not arguing with you, but I'm saying that I don't know if that really preserves the, the historical nature of anything that may have been there once in time. I'm just simply saying that based on the review of this and looking at parcels of property that are in the immediate vicinity of this parcel, I don't see anything else that looks anything similar to this. So if it does have historical nature that somebody knows about, enlighten me, that's fine. I'm receptive to that and I'm sure my client would be receptive to that. But as I stand here today, I'm not just waving a hand, I'm saying I don't have any information that suggests that this is a historic feature at this parcel of land. And that's, you know, I don't know how much else I can do to kind of drive that point home. The absence of any evidence suggesting that it's historical, to me, would mean that it's not historic, but.
From the photographs, it doesn't really look like it's in distress. It doesn't look like it's falling down, tipping over.
No, on the inside, there's a little bit of damage, but it's not, it's not falling down.
There's definitely wood rot around some of the exterior. It's not, it's not a pristine shape. You can see it, you also have that wood rod, there was some water exchanger. I also just want to point out, because we had these discussions, you know, you can see the light coming through, the wood rod is around the edges. It's very possible, I'm guessing there was not once a wellhouse there. I think that's probably what happened. Right, but the reproduction of it, which we've discussed on the files, we don't want something to be a reproduction of something historic to mimic that it was historic if it's not, right? And so this doesn't look historic and so if it's replaced, we wouldn't necessarily want it to be historic so people aren't confused by that, right? And so I think it's like, well, then what is the solution where we can still have a nod to the history? And just a thought, you know, maybe the applicant can take a measuring tape and put it down to that top stone on the inside and measure the outside and get a little bit of gauge of how far out of the ground it's coming so we can come up with a solution, you know, for it.
Yeah, well, it's always problematic when, you know, say 40 years ago, you know, there was a big wave of, you know, restore means, you know, put it back to its original and well, of course they would have had a wellhouse here, so let's go down to the lumberyard, let's go to William's Lumber and get some lumber and build a wellhouse and look at some pictures of New England, you know, and it might have nothing whatsoever to do with the property. and it might have nothing whatsoever to do with the property or what was there. So that idea of not really proceeding until you know what's going on creates confusion for people in the future.
Elise, were you there with Warren?
Was that Warren with us? Yeah, Warren and Kathy.
And were you privy to what, any conversation?
Yeah, the only reference, which I thought was a good point, was, you know, because there's an old well, how do we create context of honoring that, right? But it wasn't clear of like, it has to be that wellhouse. It was just kind of like, we want that feature to be considered because that's part of the historic landscape of it. But I didn't hear them say like, anything related to, you know, positive reaction to that particular wellhouse. They were just kind of like, oh, you know. I think it was more of just, how do we create context of feature in the fact that this is towards the front lawn of a historic district? That was my takeaway, which is why extending the well felt like a really great compliment, you know, for the feature. That was my understatement.
How deep is the well?
I have no idea how deep that well is.
Is there a cover over the water?
No, there's not.
It's like a latch, it's kind of stuck, but it's not great. The situation is not...
It's got a wellhouse over it.
Yeah, it has a wellhouse over it, but it's not, it doesn't feel super secure.
I mean, it's a replacement wellhouse, obviously there wasn't a wellhouse there. It's a well there, we have this photograph.
So I told the historic resource survey, she doesn't say anything in the write-up, but I was taking a look at this picture. This does appear to be the structure, but I don't know this picture.
I can't judge the photograph, but the listings are of the seventies typically. But the photograph to me looks older than the seventies. It looks like Pabel Lady Earle's historic photo the reviewer found and attached it to the listing.
But there's no date on the photograph?
I mean, it's a photocopy.
There's no date on the review that we're looking at. I don't know much about it.
But it's not listed itemized, like sometimes they'll say, "structure and wellhouse", or "structure garage, wellhouse".
So I'm just saying that it wasn't done in less than twenty, you know, twenty-five years probably, but it is in this picture, I have no idea what this picture was.
Why is that funny projecting rooms?
It might have been that at the time of the survey, we took the, after the photograph, long after the photograph was taken, there was no wellhouse. Somebody used the photograph to recreate it. I don't know. We could do dendrochronology on the two-by-fours.
Yeah, right.
And these two parts of this application are together simply because they're together, not because the repair of the front porch and all the work that has to happen there is directly related to this aspect of the application, right?
Yeah, I don't think it's because you're here you want to...
That's correct. It was, the idea was that my client had a termite infestation damage, got to stop work order from doing the repair, then was hit with other violations regarding things that weren't reflected on the site plan from before. So he said, Shaun, this is something else that I'd like to consider doing, so can we add that to the application? Which seemed to make sense at the time.
Also, the repairs that are being done on the porch are one-to-one repairs, with the exception of the brick, which is being replaced with blue stone.
No, just the cap. The brick, I don't think, the idea isn't to knock down the steps that are there. It's the repair and the cap.
If you look at the front steps, you can see the two different colors is two different, it's a repair that was made of the original with the red. That brick does not match the structure of these steps. And they're going to clean up and re-point the brick there. And what's there capped at with the blue stone that is on the wall.
You mean, consistent with the wall? Okay, because it looks like behind the brick, there's blue limestone tiles or something like that kind of pieced in?
Yeah, but this picture is not current, just so you know. The steps are in poorer condition, okay? And there's no porch there at all, sort of speak.
And this faces the street.
Correct.
Okay, and again, I don't want to take issue with being hippicky about this, but it does involve the street facade. And you're not doing, you're not just putting back what was there. This is introducing a change, which is it appropriate or not?
Wouldn't you presume that stairs or the challenge work with the wooden stairs?
Probably, yeah.
No, because it's a brick, it's a brick, the sides. It wasn't a wooden structure, it's a brick structure.
The house is brick? The foundation was brick. We noticed the foundation wall on the outside was brick.
It's brick in a sense.
No, but it transitions from brick steps into a wood porch, so...
But the bricks matched on the house.
I'm there.
I don't know, but despite putting the blue stone on top of the brick, you end up changing your rise of the stairs. So at some point, you've got to catch up with that. And if you're even...
I think the stairs have to be totally...
Too short a step at the deck, and how's that going to get...
I'm not a contractor or an architect.
Okay.
But my assumption, which I would hope is correct, is that all work will be done in a work manner and it's a code.
I would also point out, if there is a picture in here, that the steps, like, the grade kind of comes up on one side, it's not making... They need some reworking. Look, like, on the left side, if you won't get there, you're not at the right elevation. Like, it needs to be tweaked anyway, I would say. And when you hit the top step, I don't know that the, I didn't measure it, the porch is not there, but that top step to the porch also needed work on the elevation.
It's too short, yeah. It's like you've got about five inches on the top step.
There's some tweaking that needs to happen there.
They're going to go across.
Yeah, and it's supposed to be even to what they tripped at.
Right.
And if they're using the blue stone, it's...
Well, I think the idea is to make it safer and more user-friendly than what is there now.
Well, the brick you see is not from the original steps. It does not, that brick is, you know, in the last fifty, sixty years. It's markedly different from the foundation brick on the side of it. That was just put in there as a repair. If you're looking at it, you can see that. So if they're tweaking something, they're not tweaking what's historic. They're going to restore that, they're tweaking a prior repair.
Also, the columns are partially bonded, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, so are those being replaced entirely or are those being matched?
They're being replaced based on those drawings.
I think I already...
So they're going to be brackets to match existing...
If they're going to be custom turned?
To match existing, one inch, I think that's, I don't know what that says. I think there's five inches, five inches maybe? Five-inch curved wood column to match existing.
No, yes, would wooden steps be more appropriate for this house? That was the point I was asking earlier, that I don't, when I look at it, that's what I would have expected to be there when the house was constructed originally. I would have expected to have brick steps. What are we making up to be the days?
Well, and again, there's a saying in the historic preservation rule, nothing is more original than the state in which it's bound in. So, you know, we see this house as it is. You know, we have to rationalize any changes that are being made to it. So there was a flurry of building in the eighteen... Eighteen sixties, yeah.
Our site says eighteen sixty, this is eighteen eighty-five.
Has any thought been given to making the steps wood?
Uh, no.
Do you see that it's particularly difficult?
Uh, the moving concrete brick steps, I think is somewhat difficult and costly. But again, I'm not a contractor. My client really just wanted to repair a termite-infested wood and make his property usable and safe. Whether, you know, if somebody came and put brick steps on there after there were wooden steps, you know, there was a comment made about an applicant not doing enough work by yourself. But I think that there's a lot of guessing going on right now about what this may have looked like or what it could have looked like. And I don't think that that burden should necessarily be on the applicant in this situation. This is a porch repair. We have plans, we want to keep it as consistent as possible to what was there. The steps are just to clean them up, re-point them, put blue stone over it so it's consistent with the blue stone that's going to go around the property. And the wellhouse, we just wanted to remove it so that we can improve the property, see what was there.
Sorry, is your applicant familiar with the Secretary of Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties?
I don't know what my applicant is familiar with or what my client's familiar with when it comes to these historic standards. What I can tell you though, is what I just said. My client desires to repair a termite-infested front porch. Because what was there, the architectural drawings are there. Warren Smith has had an opportunity to redo them as well. And I'm just simply saying that the idea is to make the repairs and so that they're accurately depicted on the site plan. As far as all these other historical requirements, I'm not familiar with them. If you'd like to, you know, show me what they are, how we're deviating from those, why we're required to comply with them, but this, let's see through a piece of property, I'm open to that discussion, I don't think it's necessary.
As a different landmark district, that's why we're asking the questions, we're asking...
That's fine, and I'm giving you the responses that I'm giving you because that's the information that I have. And I think that it's fair and reasonable that you guys have those concerns.
Thank you.
And I think it's fair and reasonable that my client, you know, doesn't have all the information.
I want to hear from HAPAC. I want to hear from HAPAC. You know that Warren was there, you know, he was intending to write a report. I'm not prepared to make a decision tonight personally, till I hear from him.
And how long does HAPAC have to make their submission?
I will ask you that.
Could you say that if we could ask soon, like we could go out two weeks to see the floor?
Yeah, I was told today you have it by this evening, and I'm sorry to know. But we requested, so I think there... The steps in particular are of concern for me, you just put the retop on top of brick. I don't, I can't imagine that would even come close to what we put in there, and I don't want to make it worse. I just don't want to add another layer to something that is adding more incorrectness. I agree with you, I hear you, but don't have the information. But I do believe that we want to be in a program. So that's what I personally stand to do.
Are there any other pings on your wings here? Are there other agencies that are involved in this review?
Well, one thing that I...
One thing that I would like to see is the details of the turn-ins
because I would expect that these columns that support this porch are not available off the shelf at Williams Lumber Home Depot. So I think the client is probably going to have to have custom turn-ins done, and...
So can we go back to the drawings?
The plan that's on there doesn't really show it... I mean, it has the photograph, but I just see a cylinder there. And it does say, "turned to match wood column", but I would want to make sure that they get...
What do you need, what details do you need to see?
I would want to see that drawn on the plan, that that's what's going to be there. A silhouette of the actual columns, not the, you know, the cylinders. So a little more detail of what's going to be removed.
It also would...
Would you take a close-up photograph, Craig, of the same thing? Or when you replace it at that point?
Well, it is, I'm not going to inspect it, it's going to be the building inspector, and he's going to have to have something to go on. This is what was in the plan, and this is what was delivered, and that's correct, it's considered, or no, it's not?
Anyone else on the phone?
I just wanted to make one other comment. And that is, on the steps, it's unclear to me whether, if blue stone was put on top of the brick, that this would meet the building code. Because it seems like that last step is far too shallow and would be a trapazza. And so that is something that would, at least suggest a look at replacing the steps.
What would you like the steps replaced with?
That's not what I would like. Even if you were to replace them with brick, they have to meet the building code, so...
No, I understand, and that was my comment, that all work would be done in a work in my manner and for some code. So I'm just saying, is there an issue with the brick as it is now? If it was just to be left?
There is an issue with the reality of what we're seeing in the photograph, which is that last rise is too shallow. And so I'm wondering what you could, how you could possibly then add stone to what's there and add up and end up with something that meets the building code. I'm just trying to put this out there so you don't...
No, I understand.
You're spinning here.
No, I understand, I just know if there's something that the board is suggesting other than what HAPAC might say as far as the building materials that should be used. Or is that just being left to HAPAC?
No, it's no doubt, I think Edna's looking for shows this from her. Who, so did the contractor prepare the drawings? Or is this the architect?
Architect.
And the architect, I believe, was the person we first spoke with. Is that correct? So it was a woman, so they were...
No.
No, she was...
Oh, she was the realtor, okay. Okay. Well, I think Edna is, I'm trying to clarify this for Edna, but I think she's looking for assurances or some kind of documentation that just putting the blue stone on there is going to solve the problem and the difference of the rise.
I'm suggesting that it will not. And that would then lead me to believe that it might be necessary to replace the steps. And if that were actually the case, then I would look to the people who understand historic buildings more than I do to suggest what the material should be.
Also, I'm sorry, this drawing seems to depict a wood staircase.
Well, I thought that was a wood porch.
Which is likely the brick corner, I'm sorry. Okay, but that's getting replaced with blue stone.
It would be cap.
No, I think, I think HAPAC reported that wall, so it kind of gave us some insight for the wellhouse, which I think is the only other outstanding item that we brought this film.
Okay. Anyone here for the book?
No one?
I'm in here.
No comments?
Do you have a wellhouse for each of you?
Now, Sean, just because there is a door.
We can add some, right?
No, what I'm saying is, you said on several occasions that Warren looked around and didn't see anything in the neighborhood. That doesn't tell me anything. That doesn't mean it was or it wasn't.
No, no, I understand, I understand. The comment though, the change that I had with Warren was that some of these wellhouses, generally, they do have, in keeping with the character of the community and things of that nature, they become more and more significant. they become more and more significant, even aside from some of the historic, the kind of historical significance. And we just looked around and noticed that there were observations. I'm not saying that it only exists anywhere in my book. I'm just saying that in the immediate vicinity. You look right across the street, for instance, it's a much more modern house.
I'm going to ask again if there's public comment. And since this gentleman has risen to his feet, I assume...
Hi, I'm Will Korzenick. You know me. I'm the next door neighbor. I just, I have a question about whether there's any landscaping involved in this plan. I haven't heard anything about it. The client is not particularly accessible, so I'm curious to know more about what's happening. Appreciate your, your eye to detail. Thanks.
Okay, good point.
No landscaping, just pay the, the point, Warren.
Yeah, we're saying that in one of the quick points, they did discuss landscaping. So would you confirm that they are still not intending to land state at all type?
Sure, I'll do that soon as I see it.
Any males? May I have your motion to continue the public hearing? I would like it to continue.
I think we could continue it to, because that's usually a long country. We should get a report, give them time to banner, and hopefully Warren can get it to us in the next couple of days.
Pardon?
Appreciate that.
All right, so may I have your motion to continue the public hearing until February 8th? Second, all those favorites.
Thank you very much.
And not to be impertinent, but it is worth perusing the Secretary of the Interior standards. It's not a prescription, but it does outline best practices for our residents, and it's a really useful document. And you may find that many of the things that the client is aiming at are listed as best practices, and maybe some of the things that are not listed as best practices can be done in a slightly different place. So you're saying it's a really useful resource.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next public hearing this evening is that of the Fire School in Michigan, 7085 and 70919. Site plan and special use permit for the daycare and the school.
Good evening. Again, hello, White House, Montana, representing the applicant. Pardon, my partner Charlie Yolling was on my speaker tonight because of another meeting he had. But I trust you received the letter that he submitted to you. Providing updates for our status, correct? Okay, so we just wanted to use this evening to update you as to where we're at within the work that we're doing on this, provide to you the ability to talk a little bit through the traffic communication plan or the stack that we, that we detailed in the letter to you. There's almost two other things. So importantly, I think the first thing to remember is that this is a Type II action under secret. There's no environmental review. That being said, we do need to get your site plan and special permit approval. Then you get the Department of Health approval, or the Suffolk family, you get DOT approval for the driveway. So each, these entities have their own separate distinct jurisdictions. We submit DOH. We received a positive response back from DOH this morning, which Paul provided for you. And so, long story short, where DOH is at is they're ready to approve once we provide for them a site plan, a site plan approval resolution for you, at which point you'll drill the wells, do the testing, et cetera, et cetera. As far as DOT, we have been engaged with DOT. We are, we did provide to them our traffic communication plan. There is some back and forth that we're having with them. My understanding is that county juniors copied on most, if not all, of that communication. So we're still in the process with them. I think in terms of, you know, DOT's review, we want to wait until we hear back from them as to what they want. They have jurisdiction over Route 9, it's their road. And so what we want to be able to do is provide to them what their requirements are, if any, and then go from there. That being said, I think she's here, the applicant, she's here tonight to talk a little bit about drop-off. It's a little different than probably what you necessarily think of for daycare, but it's actually quite similar to what we do for elementary school. So she's going to walk through that in a minute with you. Initially, we have Marty Wilk, who's our senior engineer. We have an updated, yeah, we have an updated site plan for you that he pulled together. Let me make copies.
We know these are ours, but...
You can share. You have to share. And so the site plan here updates even from what we had within our submission of the letter. It updates the site plan even from what we submitted in our letter. This is quote hot off the presses. This was sent this morning. When did you finish that?
Yes, that, you let mine file out. We emailed over.
This morning. And so...
So not newer than that?
Not newer than that. Not newer than that. It's still pretty hot off the presses. So anyways, and that shows some updated locations as to where the parking would be, as well as stacking, et cetera. So I'm no engineer, and I'm not the applicant.
Let me just make a point, and one can follow up with this. Our practice is we do not issue preliminary framework approval. We wait for the health department. So what, this is nice, but we have new engineers down there, and we don't, I don't know, Jenny.
How have you done it? I'm assuming that this is...
We require health department approval before we approve.
Okay, so I'm assuming that the health department...
Well, no, that's consistent for my net. I know that the health department approval says this, but that's...
All right, well, I mean, okay, so no, we got, no, I understand. So we will talk and get, I've worked with the county health department on a number of other projects. So we'll make sure we're all on the same page, so that all starts aligned at the right time. So that being said, we're going to have Anushka. She's going to talk a little bit about the drop-off plan as well as the step.
Hello again. So you also in your package two weeks will receive a sort of traffic management plan. So I'm going to go over that. So the school will be open from 7:30 to 5:30. There will be two options for enrollment, 7:30 to 5:30 enrollment, or a seven-hour enrollment within that timeframe. Certain families need 7:30 to 5:30 here, so they will all, I don't imagine everybody needs 7:30 to 5:30 here, and that's not a good kind of response they receive from interested families. Three age groups, infant toddler and primary, as you saw. Infant drop-off will take place between 8:00 and 8:30. Infant families will park in the parking spots, walk their infants to the door, drop them off at the door, go back to their car, and leave the premises. They have a 30-minute window to do that. Toddler families will then begin coming into the driveway. And as I mentioned before, toddler families will roll up to the door where a teacher, two teachers will be waiting. The parents will not exit the vehicle. The person driving the vehicle will not exit the vehicle. Toddler will exit the vehicle, go into their classroom, and then next family will roll up to the entrance. So there is a 15-minute area allotted for drop-offs. And from 8:45 to 9 o'clock immediately after that will be for primary, which is three fours and fives. Same thing, they'll roll up to the driveway, families will not exit the vehicles, and then the parents will leave the premises. The schools that we've seen that employ this carpool lane, the school that my kids currently go to, or what my kids currently goes to, they have a five-minute period allotted for this carpool lane. And they have 17 students in the class. It moves really quickly. We've seen that, that's the Waymill Road does drop-off, that's a school I'm familiar with. A parent who was here last, a couple of months ago, also spoke about the same drop-off procedure for that school, for a much smaller driveway. So we have staggered this just to ensure that there would be no, no cars to pile up on Route 9. Really don't anticipate any of that happening. If you look at the picture, you see the maximum gravel cars in the driveway. In the event, that very unlikely event that the driveway is entirely full of cars, a teacher will go out to the road and ensure parents drive past school and do not stop traffic on Route 9. This will be outlined in our school policies and our school handbook. In the event that the driveway is not full and there are cars piled up, so say the blue cars on the north side of the driveway here, say there are six cars or seven cars piled up, the person who is here taking the first place in, will instruct these first few cars to pull into the parking spaces, allowing more cars into the driveway. And in those situations, again, extremely unlikely, but we are trying to convey these words. I hope for you, Ari's going to talk a little bit more about the driveway unless there are questions about it.
Well, let's hear all your presentation and open it up for the audience.
Hello, can we go back to the first sheet? Thank you. So in the upper right-hand corner, that's our existing plan. That is there now. And you can see the dark, or the dark solid line is the outline of the existing driveway. There you go. Oh, thank you so much. The dashed line on the drawing represents the new driveway shape that will be there. Thank you so much. So this is the existing driveway, oh, shit. Existing driveway line, and then the dashed is the proposed driveway line here. Let me see. The north entrance of the driveway right now is a two-way, it's an entrance and an exit. As well as the south entrance, it's an entrance and an exit. But what's also going on now is our neighbor to the south here shares a driveway with the south drive, with the existing south driveway. And in addition to that, there's a existing 100-foot by 20-foot easement that extends along the property line right there, extending 10 feet on either side of that property line, that requires access for either of the property owners to use that to access their property. So that's right there. And so part of our plan is to separate these two driveways. We've spoken with the neighbor to the south several times, and she, it seems like the best course of action would be to not prevent her from using that entire easement as she would need to, but, and basically shift our driveway away from that easement so that we're not affecting her, and she's not affecting us with a separate, you know, the approved driveway. It didn't seem like we were going to get her to sign off. And just, it, who knows what the reasons are. But it didn't look like we were going to be able to get her to sign off on a joint, shared driveway. So we modified our plan, shifted our driveway to the north, pick up more of our property, and just provide two clean, clean access points for the two driveways. So actually, so if we go down here to the lower left right here, here's our proposed plans. And so you can see the north entrance right here, it's 14 feet wide there. That will, that's going from two-way to one-way. And we come in around the lot here, and then our exit is a 12-foot wide exit. And you can see right, you can see right here, that's our easement line right there. And actually, if we could possibly zoom to that spot right there. So what we've done is we've maintained, this line right there is her, is the existing southern edge of that driveway. So for her point of view, the driveway, the edge of her driveway will not change. It's exactly the same as where it was originally. Or actually, you see this dashed line right there? It's the same location, just a different shape. Basically, that southern edge has not changed. This dark line right here, that represents what the DOT would consider a compliant driveway width, 12-foot wide width coming out to the road, 16-foot radius. But that does not provide her the use of that entire easement. And so what she actually could use is this dashed line right there. She has, we've allowed her to use right up to the edge of her easement, protecting her from our property for her driveway access if she so chooses. And then we've kept a 10-foot wide swath of the easement open here. We do have parking spots on this side of the easement. They are 10-minute parking spots, but they are within the easement. But it does not, you know, basically the purpose of the easement is to provide access to the property. And there's no situation where she needs to drive through here to access their property. So we feel that this is a fair and, a fair way to plan and in spirit of the original agreement. So let me see, so the existing driveways gravel, they're going to be asphalt. There's a sidewalk here that provides access where people are parking. They can walk along the sidewalk on the interior of the island, and they get to the crosswalk, crosswalking with the school. So that's that. This other little thing, here's our trash collection right there. Proposed daycare is there, the show is there, two bedroom residence is right there. All right, can we go to the sheet two? And yeah, we started the lower right-hand corner, so this is what Anushka was playing out before, our flow-through and our stacking and our flow-through of the site. And so essentially, we, this is sort of a full-capacity sort of a situation, of course. This is just what we can provide if the situation will arise. And so I'm not, I'm actually, I'm not going to repeat what she said, but basically we get the idea that the, these spots here run through, run through eight. They are for teachers and residents, that's teacher resident parking. The infant drop-off spots would be here, 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 and here. It's sort of like a 30-minute circle window that they'd be potentially there for. And just to keep in mind, this is continuously flowing. So these green spots here, we did these green spots because we wanted to abide by the town code that no parking was at 50 feet of the front parking. And we did need the parking, but we couldn't put parkless spots there. So what we thought we would do was say, provide for a safe place to stand if people need to stop their car, build their kid, and then move on, but not provide a parkless spot that is going to be used throughout the day in terms of like. It'll just be their pickup and drop-off times. And then the only other thing here we show, you can't really see them, but it's just depicted as, these are one-way signage required by the DOT. There'll be one-way entrance signage, one-way exit signage, signage on either side of the driveway, parallel to the driven way, signed back-to-back. That's a back-to-back that. And then the rest of this sheet just basically deals with the stopping site distance for the property, showing the DOT that we can meet those stopping sites with it. And we do, we meet all the required stopping site distances that the DOT would ask of us on Route 9 at 55 miles an hour. And then this is, this is a 30-foot single-unit truck. And this is the design vehicle for the DOT. And this is the design vehicle for the DOT that they use to properly size a mile-per-hour driveway. And we're just showing here that they can successfully make that turn into the northern driveway there. Just dimensioning on the driveway. And again, this illustrates our stopping site distances and that we can apply the DCC standards. And then last sheet is one, just, I think, last sheet is just, people look, so it's just, that's the one-way signage, some details on that, and then just a profile of the driveway and a section of the asphalt driveway. So any of my sheets you want, I have to do it.
It's been on the plan for a few months, but we never talked about it. There are plans to add floor panels on the main building.
So I don't have a whole lot that's new, just reiterate a couple of things that I've already said. That is that there are several outside approvals that are needed. NICE dot county health, OCFS. And we do typically like to see at least some kind of approval sign up from OCFS. They are capable of going on here on the property and as it relates to the number of kids that can come in. And that kind of relates back to, can I interrupt?
What do you look for from OCFS? Generally speaking, in order to submit an application to OCFS, you have to have some sort of approval or something of a waste pattern which is located.
We've done one of these before, and we did get some preliminary feedback from OCFS on the interior of the building and the number of students that they intended to have, that they were looking at it and didn't have, yeah. It was kind of a punch list of items that they had, so it didn't say, you can't do this here. It was more of a punch list that this thing is to be this way or that is to be that way. Some kind of acknowledgement from them that they are reviewing it and haven't said no.
We can't say no until you've submitted the application, but Ed was the first to show them at their office because you, sorry?
When you've met with them in person, have they answered your question?
Well, no, because they won't do that. Show them at their office because you had a question a few months ago. You knocked on the door and showed up asking me for something and said, we do not give you anything. You can ask the lawyer about it. Reference the DCC manual, which says specifically you cannot comment on anything until the town approves on it. They're not going to.
Maybe we should move back to prior application we were talking about, just confirm.
I mean, you can, you can have maybe somebody, maybe John, you can call OCFS. I don't know what else to tell you.
The hard reason I'm bringing this up is if they come back to tell you you can't do, say, part of the building the way it is, you're going to have to come back and force again and start all over again.
Yes.
And we're trying to prevent having to do that with getting outside approvals in advance so you don't go through that process. If they make any changes to the footprint or anything else, you're going to have to start all over again before the board because of changes to the site plan.
Right, so the manual is the one that is sent here, right? The one that explains this, that explains all the regulations you need at the original daycare center. And all it needs is toilets, and that's why we're adding toilets. It needs square footage, so we are adding square footage, right? It needs staircase with a rail, staircase with a rail. The things required are here, and that's what's in the manual, that's what's in the DCC regulations. And that's why they publish it and give it to us and they say, specifically, I mean, I have an email from them saying you do not comment on things. I can show you that. Or you can look at the manual, you can look at the first page again, or you can ask John to call OCFS. Truly, you're not able to talk about it.
Okay, so I'm just letting you know why we asked for these outside approvals. Because again, if something changes on the site plan, we start over.
We understand that. We understand that if OCFS comes and says this site plan will not be permit, will not be approved before a data license, that we have to come back to you and seek a limited site plan. And so we understand that.
Right, and so I guess part of the reason I'm asking that is, you know, this has gone through a lot of iterations, you know, over the months. And when it first came in, there was no addition proposed on the building. Now we have an addition, and we're also proposing to use the shed in the back. So things have changed and progressed, you know, as we've gone through the process, which is fine. I mean, that happens in these processes, but it just, as the changes have gone forward, it just seems like, I don't, we don't know necessarily why these changes have taken place, other than maybe it makes more sense for what you want to do. But there's just no guarantee that you're going to get that approval from the state. But if that's a risk you're willing to take, and that's something the board will have to consider, you know. We don't do that with county health, we don't do that with DOT, those are different situations.
Those are land use, right, I mean, you're, you have an attorney. I'm not going to tell you what your jurisdiction is, your attorney can tell you that. But my understanding is that your jurisdiction is land use issues related to site plan. OCFS's jurisdiction is licensing issues related to approving the structure in which the, and so they're concurrent, but they're also separate, and we understand the risks that are inherent in proceeding as we're asking.
Okay, that's fine. So again, so we've talked about the outside approvals, we're still talking with NICE dot. It looks like you've got some information back from the county from Red Hook. Unfortunately, as of January 1st, given the number of outside approval needed, new DCC weapon regulations came into effect. And so I do believe you're going to need to apply DCC for jurisdictional determination to ensure you don't have weapon issue with the DCC or weapon permits required.
So the DCC did release, this is a change to the law, 664. And they did release a document that describes the changes. And I scoured it, and I looked for, because the issue, the issue is, is the Ryback Kill flows through the western part of it. And we are hundreds of feet away from the Ryback Kill. But in part of the new regulation, the DCC does mention a new 300-foot buffer. Which would, and this is what you're referring to, right? Would put portions, even though we're not doing anything in terms of the new footprint for buildings, I think our, our septic system, I believe, would be within the 300 feet of the Ryback Kill. But what they say is they say, I can't read it, can I take a seat? Essentially, the only portion is, they talk about extending wetland adjacent area for very specific wetlands. There are bogs, fens, fertile pools. Those are the only wetlands that is mentioned at all within the new law change that's available. That talks about an increase in that adjacent area. And it's the only thing that could possibly affect any of the work that we're doing on the lot.
So my understanding is that the jurisdictional determination has to be made within 800 feet of a weapon. I also don't think, because nothing's been done on the weapon because we didn't need to, but we don't know what kind of weapon we have. So for the purposes of ensuring that you don't need a permit or if you do, my suggestion is to go to the website and ask for the jurisdictional determination to get it, because we don't know, this brand new just came up two weeks ago.
Yeah.
We don't know if there's a fertile pool on the site or what your weapon's supposed to buy, because they haven't released maps on that. They're going to, the only way to know about classifications and if there's a fertile pool is to ask them specifically. They're not going to.
Yeah, but it's contrary, the whole, the whole definition of fertile pool or a bog is a low-nutual wetland. You can't have a river and have a bog at the same time. It just, I know, I know we're not talking about that, and we'll definitely do whatever the board suggests, but I'm just saying, the law is out, it's very clear what they're talking about here. And we can ask for jurisdictional.
Jurisdictional determination.
Jurisdictional determination, but that is a Ryback Kill that's been established as a ripperine. It is a ripperine, it's been there forever. You can look on any wetland mapping online, it's, they're going to call it, not going to call it a fertile pool or a bog.
But it is a wet.
Sure, sure, it's a pond or a river or whatever, but it knows what. So basically, we should contact the DCC.
It's all automation, it's online through DCC's website. If you just Google "DCC weapon regs," right into the page, and then you just submit your information there. There are three people at DCC that were reviewing these that were hired specifically for this new program. There's a webinar we sat on a couple of days ago, and they're supposed to do jurisdictional determinations pretty quickly, but they can take up to 90 days or more. It's the law the way it is now. I'm recommending anybody within 800 feet, make sure that they get the jurisdictional determination, because if you don't and you're non-conformant, they may approve a plan, your plan is therefore not approved, you don't have a state necessary permit. Alternatively, I believe the town can apply and ask for jurisdictional determination on any property in case there's a question.
Okay.
So my recommendation is just to submit it and ask for it, because it is now the new law plan. And it is new, and we don't know exactly what it all means. So for the purposes of ensuring you don't need a permit, I would just go and ask, and hopefully they'll guide it and say, you're fine. There are some guidance maps on here that show what is and is not considered to be those wetlands, but they're only guidance. The only way to be 100% sure is to ask DCC for a J D.
No problem, yeah.
So it started January 1st, it's out in the end, that's the way to make sure you don't have an issue.
No problem, no problem, okay, we'll do that.
So there's that, and then, well, the discussion's just been, you know, kind of understanding narrative of exactly what's going on, because things have changed. I did see, you know, additional details in the letter from White Minister Manana Hana and about, you know, what is proposed in terms of maximum or estimated number of kids that are coming. I think there are still a couple of issues we need to work out on specifics. I don't know that you put on these plans the size of the parking spaces. I believe you use a 7x17 vehicle, the code requires a 9x19 parking space, right? Those 9x19?
So the parking spaces that are shown here, that's a 9-foot by 18-foot parking space. So we can increase that by foot, no problem, that's fine, it's 9 feet wide.
Make sure we remove the code there, and if we could put that on the plan, that would be good.
Absolutely, yeah.
We do now have all the turning movements and things, so that's good. I did have a question about your truck turning template.
Sure.
This is obviously just an Astro standard template, that's fine. But it does show the swing room of the vehicle coming through outside of the proposal where the DCC go. Are you confident that a truck that size coming through can go through without hitting cars or parks here in the green and purple? Or are you going to ensure that the truck is only going to come in off hours?
Oh, well, yes, yes, that would be true. So if a truck's going to access the site, it would be a delivery. There's no other, either delivery or a trash pickup or septic system pumpers. Those are the only large trucks access in the site. So it would be something that we would have some control over, that would happen during the morning rush or the afternoon pickup.
Trash, trash confirmed that their pickup would be off hours. Right, well, it would have to be, because obviously you're parking in those spaces for this, you'd have to make sure that they're off hours to access it, but there is, I do have concern about the swing room, but if they're off hours, then, you know, that's fine. If they're gaining, just put a mill statement, that's the case, that could be off hours. The biggest question I have, and this didn't seem to pop up in anything until I actually saw the initial submission to DOT. And then again, I saw in the letter from the attorney, is that we're listing this as both a daycare and a school. And the reason that that matters is there are two different uses in the county Ryback. We've been reviewing this as a daycare from day one.
Yeah.
Is it a daycare or is it a daycare and a school, or is it one or the other? Because.
What's the definition, daycare and school, yeah, no problem.
It's a daycare.
Pull out, 100% daycare.
So then any references that call the school should be corrected?
Well, I mean, when you say Montessori, you generally said Montessori school. It's not to be, like, stop at age five, it would have, start, you're not having any kind of kindergarten program. It's a daycare, it's licensed as a daycare.
Yeah, the license is OCFS, not superior department, I think that's a big difference. Then, you know, my only other comment, I guess, would be just to the board for this evening. You know, now we do have details on traffic, you know, a big discussion. And just ask, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, I do a lot of traffic work, just ask if you would want input from a traffic engineer to assess this on your behalf. DOT will be looking at it, obviously, we rely on them for access to Route 9. But if you have concerns about internal circulation or anything else, as you know, you've given before, Mr. Mathia for a proposal, that is an option if you think you need to, but I still beg your pardon. I think we do have a lot more information now.
I was picking on my son from the school today, it's in the system. So I don't, like, it's a pretty standard pickup system. I don't, I don't think, I think in DOT, I think it's the largest concern, I would, they see a concern, but obviously I'm not bringing it up. So I think, I think that's a big enough power in my, personally. Yeah, I mean, I don't, this is a very similar system today, it works. Not that much bigger high school with, you know, 100 feet per class, so.
Yeah, I've got a different experience, my kids were at chancellor and they have a turnaround. And, you know, my daughter would always bail out and forget to close the fan and the door, you know? And there are always like little things that hold the line up. And I think, I know you would probably agree that the teachers and the kids really have it programmed out. Sometimes the parents that are, you know, misbehave, or get to the end of the driveway and check their phone or something like that. Like, is there some, you said you'd be sending people out if the driveway gets blocked?
So that's why we have a lot of these 10-minute spots.
To just pull over.
Yeah, somebody did need to pull over, like, when these cars are coming through, no one should be parked anywhere else, right? There's usually staff and tenant parking. So essentially, if somebody's over here, you know, kid's throwing a tantrum, and they just pull over here and they don't stop traffic. That's why we added these temporary, these type of spots.
Okay.
And also.
And it's going to be a rarity that these cars are all there at the same time anyway, right? You might have possibly two or three people going to pull ahead, kids get out of the car, they leave.
The purple spots which are made of old, I mean, that's a different delivery time.
Sure.
And so, and pickup time, so, so if you were to think about this, with the stacking system, this remote, anything in purple, it doesn't, those are not there. But that would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight spaces. And they need to be combined foot, so just a little bit of shipping. But so there's a potential of, you know, those make spaces, that's also the green spaces that we have, which are also being built. There's plenty of blocks at the side, I think it's going to be, you know, I know she said she's been reviewing her policy manual for the school, that they clearly understand what we drop off and pick up policy is, clearly understand about, you know, your child, if he's picked up and dropped off in this block here. And, you know, public, some sort of communication, if there is a doctor's permit or something like that, we'll figure that out. But having a child in a daycare also, as we told you, there's probably pretty strictly help.
I mean, the only comment I would make is, the color coordination that you did on here was super helpful. And this little grid on the side, sort of outlining these times and the way it works, it feels much more fluid in how it would flow. And, you know, I know we're talking about the chancellor, but I feel like they've gotten really good at it now, especially post-COVID, of like getting that permit, and there's way more kids than this will have. So I think it's, you know, it's helpful, the way you organize this.
Can we have more space? That's true. You know, this is, it's small. There's a lot that has to move, and there's, my concern is there's very little room there. You know, I think we're just, I don't want to take the long way, but we do have, we do have.
So let's, you know, we've had something in front of DOT, let's see what they say, they're taking a look at it, we're engaged with them. I think DOT, my firm having done a lot of Chick-fil-A's over the last few years, we are quite familiar with DOT's process looking at stacking. Everyone's gone through, well, not comparing this to Chick-fil-A, but the issue is similar. And so, you know, let's say, we'll see what DOT comes back with, we'll work with the engineer, you know, and see, and make sure that we can address any later concerns that may be there. But we certainly appreciate the recognition that we've worked really hard, try to come up with a plan that addresses the concerns you brought up.
Now, this, our, this design that we're looking at tonight, that we've just received this morning, this is not the plan that was set to the fire departments, is that correct?
I don't know what was set to the fire.
It wouldn't have been this one since we got it today?
Yeah. We can, we can update it.
No, no, sure, I can speak to the differences between.
No, no, we understand.
You just want them to see it.
What I'm saying is, we did refer this before, and we got a response, but since then, the plan has changed, so.
Okay, so we'll, we can send an update.
We'll send it.
Okay.
We'll handle that. And is there anyone else that should look at this, John, or you are?
Well, I'd send it to the fire inspector.
The fire inspector for the town. So. So just to give you a heads up that we'll be doing that, I think. Anything else you'd like to know?
For Jim, are there any issues on the house? It was a single family house. It would not be a two-family house, is that correct?
This is a whole.
Any permit issues?
Well, we have to be careful.
Not as quick.
I mean, it appears part of this proposal, that's part of the mix of this proposal on site. So park is taken into account. You can assume there's going to be at least probably two cars for apartment duty or for two people driving. So you assume that's going to count in full apartment now. And yeah, so you're going to have, you know, people on site looking at that truck or that's directly associated with the school.
I guess, you just, it looked like thirty-two kids would be the maximum you would have here. Is that right? Based on the counts?
Yeah, we would have more than that.
That would be maximum.
Based on the numbers that it was supposed to do.
Right.
That would be the most that O C F S would even envision.
Yeah, and also.
Four, oh, yeah, four, the septic system has to not limit on the, on the number of students that. Yeah, students and teachers.
There would be more than thirty.
Thirty-two students.
Yep.
Then you have the teachers.
So is there a written narrative somewhere in the file that sets forth all this information?
I think, I have this feeling on a chance, I don't know, but there's a, that looks to me like the infant drop off has numbers attached to it. And I mean, we're looking to make sure that this is the first time we really look at it. So if we have additional questions about the narrative specific to that, we'll get touchy and ask you that.
I can also, I'll forward to the engineers, we're two, it just talks about numbers in terms of what went into the septic system, but it'll show our numbers before.
Jim, you also, I think you mentioned in your notes, the recommendation that there be more screening in this grassy area, the street building.
Yeah, I mean, that's a discussion for the board to have. Typically, typically, parking is not supposed to be in front of the building. There's flipping statements in the codes, like, in fact, the benefit, if the state goes to the applicant and then you can have that parked in there. It also utilizes existing, you know, empty space as opposed to having your own, create your own space. But yes, you do have parking in front of the building. There's, I think there's, there was some indication there, but maybe it's going to come out on the site of this scenario, but.
Yeah, I think there was, there's one tree in the northwest corner of the island that, that can say. I mean, we think we have room for it, as shown that school.
But I guess part of the question, you talked about that, I don't know if it's the grass down or if it's just in the sidewalk area now, or is where you would evacuate to if necessary, where?
Yes, you can evacuate the building. Go if you're here, if you're here, across this way, on the entire migration site.
So we don't want to necessarily plant where obviously they're going to want to be if they had to evacuate the building. But if you could consider some additional screening between that area, closer to the street, maybe just to kind of soften the look.
Yeah, we'll add it back to this plan. There was some load, so they put on.
John, John? Is there anyone here from the public hearing? Comment on this application? All right, there is none. Then we, we worship to continue the public hearing.
Do you want to continue it or do you think it's, we could end it since there's no further comment?
Unless you want to close the public hearing. Still going to wait.
Yeah, yeah, we're still going to wait, but I mean, we, I think, you know, what we're waiting on right now is the P E C jurisdictional termination, DOT comments, we've got the D O H approvals, we've got the next line adjustments to the site plan, the size of the parking lots and a few notes with regard to additional screening and deliveries, off-hours delivery only. It's seeming pretty straightforward.
We don't. Yeah, I recommend against closing the public hearing to Michael's plan when you came in today.
I, I was going to say, in the past, I'm not, and I'm not putting in the weight or emphasis on this. In the past, we received a number of comment letters from the neighbor upon receipt of changes to your application. And I would not want to prevent her from being able to make public comment.
Sure. We also, you know, we've closed the public hearing. At the moment, we're ready to discuss, you know, plural type discussions. I think there's still some, you know, potential discussions of site plan out there based on your.
So are you all right with that? Comfortable with our decision?
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you. No, thank you for explaining.
Do you have any questions?
Well, we haven't got that far.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Have you, you haven't had any confirmation from all of the other outside agencies?
I mean, the only, I think the only outside agencies we've got is now DOC, D C, D O H, D F T, Fire, Town Fire Inspector.
I mean, Health Department is saying, oh, you'll have it tomorrow.
No, no, Health Department has said, we can't issue something until the planning board approves.
But they're done with their review.
But yeah, they're done with their review. D O H is just waiting for you to sign off. We'll coordinate. DOT can submit it and we're waiting for the law to submit.
They're usually.
Yep.
Well, we're deciding whether to go out one month.
Oh, okay.
That's what we're talking about here, huh? Are you going to be ready to come back and go out?
Our bill at the DOT has just been pretty responsive, so we're confident. We've been back and forth with him a few times now. And we feel that this submission will address his concerns that he brought in his letter. So we're optimistic that if we're one month out, we would be, we would be prepared with a DOT approval.
Everybody okay with that? All right, so the motion, all the motion is going to be February eighth, beginning of the year. Do you have that motion?
Second.
第二个. Close the motion. Thank you. Thank you for our new information. And next, for public hearing this evening, that is Gary Prince and Noah Swiss, African Road. Site plan specialties, permit, one, one. Site plan review for the construction, single-family dwelling, public care, and the ground for the fence.
Good evening, matter chair, members of the board. My name is Dan Leary. I'm the attorney for the applicant. I'm accompanied by Christina DeShawn and Zach Hall of K D A. They are going to give a presentation for the technical board of our site plan for the proposed single-family residential dwelling at African Road. And then I would follow up with some of the points that I made in my correspondence, in which I trust you received on January sixth, along with K D A's responses to the Hudsonian, I believe you received. So I'm turning over to the board, Christina.
And what I'd like to reference as we go through this is some of the graphics from our October seventh, twenty twenty-four submissions, as well as our, some of our submissions from August nineteenth. Have those. So this project began as part of a subdivision approved a long time ago. And we know that we're allowed to build a house on this lot, that it's a limited use. And that the reason that we're in front of the board is because of the historical significance of the neighboring property. So as part of that, the board has, of course, requested archaeological studies, which we submitted, completed and submitted last spring. And those came back with a complete clean bill of health. There was nothing of significance noted in any of the studies. And so really, at that moment, last spring, we completed the, we satisfied the purpose of our site plan review. And I want everyone to remember that the reason that we're here is not because we're asking for a special permit. It's not because this is a commercial business, because this is a, there's, this is a single-family home. And it's, it's only the historic aspect of the neighboring property that has triggered this. So if we could pull up October seventh, appendix M. So due to the historic nature of the property, there's been a lot of plot that's gone into the evolution of it over the years. It all starts with parcel B, which is the pink area in the center. And parcel B was the original subdivision of this area. And years ago, parcel B changed in shape, which is just right here, nineteen eighty-five. The purpose of that was that parcel B is given a cul-de-sac. And the idea at that point was that when the shared driveway was installed, that parcel B would discontinue use of the historic road and come off of that cul-de-sac. And this is all because of the historic nature of this area and the properties. So what parcel B ended up doing was installing a pond in the way of what would be this, this driveway, this cul-de-sac. And so just in that act, and also in the approvals of Block One or Block Three down here, the planning board has already allowed several different alternate driveways to what was originally the intent, all the way back to the beginning of the subdivision process. So I think it's clear that you've already allowed for subdivision, for the subdivision plan not to be followed. And the modifications that we're asking for, the driveway that we're asking for, is something that all of the other neighbors in the subdivision are in favor of. And what you'll hear Dan Leary explain after I'm done speaking is why the planning board has legal ground in order to consider this ultimate driveway. Essentially, when new information comes to light, the board has the opportunity to rethink elements of site plans that were before the board at previous times. We could go to August nineteenth, appendix D, which is the driveway slope. So it makes sense, you know, when you originally look at something in two thousand and three and twenty-seven years past, now we're in, we're in twenty twenty-five, we have new information. And now, as we look at the slope of the driveways, the original subdivision has rolling hills that are part of the natural historic landscape of the area. And if we were to put the driveway through that area, we would be doing significant terraforming, chopping off those hills and essentially like blasting away rock and in order to create, create that new driveway. Versus the proposed driveway that, that we have put in front of the board is in a naturally occurring drainage path going up the landscape that is, has significant less impact on that landscape. So we could go to appendix A, same submission. So this is a simple diagram, but essentially we've, we've identified the wetlands, we've delineated them, we then surveyed the flags that the biologists put in the ground. And then recently, we had Hudsonia come out and again review them, second biologist reviewing the wetlands. So all of these people have now agreed that the unwanted driveway is going to have a disturbance on the wetlands. And this was not information that the decision makers had in two thousand and three when this process started. Wetlands, as you, as you know, as we just talked about in the previous applicant, there's new regulations now. The state's very concerned about manatees. The state's very concerned about wetlands. And we do not want to be putting a driveway through the wetland, through the wetland buffer when we have alternate options available to us. So, you know, that is why Dan will explain after me that we can legally, you can legally look at this again and make a different decision than was noted in the language that followed the subdivision and all the site plan approvals that are, that are before us. Can we go to appendix C, stone walls? So we've got Long African Road, there's a stone wall running along the whole road. And we would be taking a much smaller portion of that away if we put the driveway off the back of the road. Versus if we put it off of Bear Tyler, which we do not want to do, we would be destroying a much larger section of stone walls. And we don't, we don't see that as favorable. So, I mean, essentially, what we've learned is we've gone through this now very extensive process, looking at all the aspects of the site, is that there are, from every different aspect that we look at it, there's a reason to reconsider the driveway location from what was originally permitted. We're conserving the historic landscape, conserving the wetlands, and, you know, being next to a historic property, wouldn't you want to reconsider based on all of these environmental factors? If you found that the plan's driveway was in a wetland, wouldn't you want to reconsider that? If you found that none of the subdivision neighbors wanted it, wouldn't you want to reconsider that? If you found that there was, there were reports, many reports now, that now say that the new driveway off of Bear Tyler would be in a wetland, wouldn't you want to reconsider where that driveway should go? Essentially, because the state just changed the laws, wouldn't you want to reconsider it? So given all of this, I mean, I would ask Kim and John, like, is it not true that the board can reconsider the language that was, that was on the previous, the previous documents? Or, I mean, why else do we have this process in place if we can't reconsider? It's one of the environmental factors that we now know. So, you know, we're very concerned about the landscape, the stone walls, the manatees, the wetlands. We know that the town's code is to protect, is not to protect trees that are smaller than eighteen inches D V H. The code is very clear about that. If we could go to August nineteenth, appendix I, for tree removal plan. So we know that no trees that were removed in the driveway location were larger than eighteen inch D V H, except for one that was dead. So other than that, the whole discussion around trees can only be focused on the house site. We know that there's, that there's a bunch of trees there that are, that are over eighteen inch D V H. We've talked about that, but we haven't heard any feedback from board members about the house site. So in terms of trees, I don't know what else, you know, we're talking about. We've covered all of this. And, you know, we have a stop work order in front of us for the, for the tree removal. But we haven't removed any, any trees that are significant in the driveway location. So on top of that, I think, you know, another, another issue, we've had no formal comparison in any of the documents between, between these two driveways. So it's, you know, why tonight we wanted to. So it's, you know, why tonight we wanted to kind of recap, start at the beginning and remind everybody about the, the reasons why we were pushing so hard to put this driveway in the location of this. And, um, you know, in terms of the, the Hudsonia report, it was also very clear that the driveway location, uh, that we do not want was going to go through the wetlands. So in light of all of that, I let.
So in my letter to the board and to Mr. Lyons, I highlighted what I found in my receipt with the case law. And that is that in addition to, to material changes, uh, the board can make a reconsideration decision based on new, new evidence presented that may not have been presented originally or may not have been aware of originally. So what are the changes here? And so Christina just went over everything with the environmental issue. Uh, effective January 1st, uh, the DEC adopted new regulations under Article 24, which, uh, clearly throw out every standard or most standards that were in existence before, about 12.4 greater being within their jurisdiction. Um, I went, I listened to the webinar that I think the attorney before me mentioned, presented by the DEC. And I also went to the New York State Forest Association Environmental Law Section presentation on last Friday where the DEC General Counsel gave an overview of the new regulations. So to me, there's no question that the, the wetland that's on site as opposed to the other one that's, that's away and on the property is one that the DEC will have jurisdiction over now under the new regulations. Did they have that in '03? I don't think they did because it was less, less than the amount. So that's, that's a big change, that's a material change to me. And we're going to have to deal with that. Um, I don't know, and, and then under your own standards of site plan, you can evaluate, you know, environmental impacts that's been mentioned before. You can do the comparative between the two driveways. And just that alone and, and the fact that it traverses a sweatland should be enough to say this no longer makes sense. On top of that, you received the letter from a neighbor, Lou Brindle, who, um, owns Lot 3. And in 2021, this board voted to, um, give that neighbor an alternate access to Barret Tyler. It does come in a little bit, but then it veers off. And so he is out of the game with Barret Tyler. And to build Barret Tyler, as he said in the, to build it out now, as he said in his letter, would mean removing all kinds of trees from his property that he doesn't want removed. The condition that's in the '03, the note that's in the '03 plaque doesn't only talk about, uh, properties having access over, over Barret Tyler. It also talks about the maintenance agreement. At this point, because of what happened in 2021, the maintenance agreement, in my opinion, has been almost rendered meaningless because the one lot owner is allowed to go away from that now. He was supposed to maintain up until the end of Lot 2. He clearly doesn't have access there anymore. And on top of that, uh, it says that if it goes beyond that, he would have to maintain that portion of it. His access that was approved goes beyond that. And there's no way that's going to be able to be enforced right now. We talked about Parcel B having a permanent access right over what was called Shterovich?
I think it's Shterovich.
Shterovich Road at the time, that, that is recorded in their deed. And it predates the '03 note. And yet Parcel B doesn't have any obligation for maintaining. Now, I understand they have other access, but this is a recorded right and they would have the ability to go through here and not have to pay anything. The, the maintenance agreement itself clearly spells out that it's only a maintenance agreement. It's not an improvement agreement or it doesn't touch on improvement. And I have yet to see any document, um, from the town or on record in the county clerk's office that talks about who's going to build this out and what are the responsibilities and allocations. To me, that's a major void in your picture. So that, those, those issues combined, I think, give you the ability to not only like, based on changing circumstances, but just to say, we no longer should follow this because it just doesn't make any sense in 2025. Any questions? Or do you want to let the public speak?
Well, I want to ask Jim for his take on this.
Not really. I mean, I think, um, also what I've been saying for, for 30 months now is we need to make a determination on driveway placements so that, you know, ICANS, the planner, will forward with, you know, a planning analysis of where we're going to head with this. And then the engineering assessment, um, you know, will be done as well. Whether that would be SWIP and then everything related to driveway grades and anything else that's going to happen. But that would need to be done regardless of where the driveway goes. So we just need to kind of get to that point before I think I spend a lot more time kind of assessing anything else related to the project, but I did do obviously a review originally. Um, the one thing I will note is that, you know, again, as you know, it's January, after January 1st, you will have to get a jurisdictional determination from DEC. If the, the advisory mapping that's online does appear to show both the wetland across the street here as well as the wetland on your site, so.
Yes, it does.
So you're definitely within, you need to get that J D from DEC.
Right. And, and, you know, just almost common sense that it's, the, the, the wetland that's across the road and not on our property is going to be less impacted than the wetland on our property if we go, if, if we go through Barret Tyler Drive. We're going to be creating more of an impact on a regulated wetland under the current regulations by going through Barret Tyler Drive than we would if we went down directly out to the Acrohut Road. And it should be mentioned that the intervening area between where we are and where our proposed driveway would be is already improved by Acrohut Road. There's, there's already improvement there. I mean, it's not like a, a already a buffer. And whoever lives across the way has their driveway within, within the buffer. Um, and, you know, of course, you know, whatever mitigation measures with, uh, any type of, um, construction mitigation measures associated with, um, the DEC approval, we would honor. Um, and so, you know, we understand that. But I think, you know, just step back and look, it doesn't, I, this, if we go down Barret Tyler, we're going right through it.
Why did you? The driveway's in the wetlands.
And, 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 and on top of that.
Yeah, why did you? I mean, the, the plans show it going right straight through. So of course there's development in the wetland because you.
Whether you put it here or here or here or here, here is all in the same zone of the wetlands.
It's going to have more of an impact.
This one doesn't look good at all.
I, I think if, even if it's, if it's changed, the impact on that wetland, and not only during construction, but, you know, the runoff of the building, it, it just, it doesn't make any sense to me. And, you know, this was a big change in the regulations.
Well, and also one thing, Barret Tyler is referred to on the map as a common drive. Or is it a shared drive? I, I doesn't refer to it as.
It's referred to as a common access.
Common access. So the, uh, Lot 3 on whose property the, the entire easement is relocated, they use that common drive, they just don't use the entirety of it.
I know, but that's not acceptable because you can't just look at that one bit of the language that you're talking about in the stack. You gotta look at the whole, the whole note ties that to the maintenance agreement. And right now, that maintenance agreement is not being honored because of what you did in 2020. You allowed him to go into his property. We have no problem with it, I'm just telling you what, what's true. And so he's no longer obligated and there's no way you're going to be able to get him to pitch in to the maintenance of Barret Tyler Road, which he's obligated to do up to the end of Lot 2. And also beyond that, he goes beyond that with his access remedy. And if you look at where his house is and what he built, it's beyond that. So you allowed him to do that, leaving my client and lot owner number one, you know, picking up, picking up the tab. And on top of that, there's no mention anywhere about how it's going to be built out as far as I know. I don't know if John has information for me. And I mentioned 288, I didn't see that, but apart from that, there's all these other issues.
Also, as they said, uh, the casp was previously conveyed when it comes about the language for that driveway.
Yeah.
Previously conveyed was obviously how it was conveyed on that, in its end.
Right.
Which obviously deviated.
Yeah, it was deviated from 2021 in a, in a material way, in my mind. And that's now what was in the gen, you know, 3. And it's okay with us because we, we also don't like Barret Tyler in a sense. But you already have this precedent that you set by voting on that in 2021. And so because of all of these things, to me, there's more than enough support for changing access in the way we're proposing. And then we think it makes eminent sense, it's the environmentally correct thing to do. It's access wise thing to do, it's less intrusive to the neighbors. And we're asking you to.
So do you just want to say that the, the map note, what the map note says is Lot 1, Lot 2 and Lot 3 shall use common access from Acrohut Road. This access has been approved by the Superintendent of Highways. Said access shall coincide with existing right of way as it was previously conveyed. And the owners of the lot shall be, uh, subject to reciprocal rights of ways into a driveway maintenance agreement which shall set forth at the time of the subdivision. The right of way shall be contained entirely on the land of Lot 3, which was Blue Brindle. I see that the access that was approved in 2021 for Blue Brindle still, it just says it, it's a common access from Acrohut Road. I do think that that is what the map note has said. It didn't say how to be off the cul-de-sac or anything like that. Um, the maintenance agreement, um, we've discussed this with the board on a few occasions in the past, not on this application, but in the, in the past on other applications. That is a private agreement. It can probably, you know, I, I did look at it, I don't see anything about it being amended, but that's, again, it's a private situation between the owners. So again, the planning board should be looking at what the map note says. And yes, you can reconsider it, as I've mentioned in the past. And that, you know, Mr. Leary has said, you know, if there's a material change or new evidence presented. And, you know, the applicant has provided some information at tonight's meeting. Grant Lyons has provided you memos in the past, I think in November. And, um, I think August might have been another one too. I think there are still concerns about site distance that were raised, um, in the past in considering this approval. I think site distance has been raised by CPL in their review and by, um, Bob Wyatt in his review as well, so.
A couple of things. One is it was strictly private and it was never been fore.
Could you?
Sure, I'm sorry. If the maintenance agreement was not referenced in the subdivision map, I would agree with you that it would be a strictly private matter. But it's not a private matter because it's on public record on a subdivision plaque that you approved and you proved it with the required maintenance agreement. So I see that as more than just a private matter. Uh, secondly, on the site distance, we know the highway superintendent originally said yes to this. And then we realized that he, he changed, he revised his position for reasons unknown to us.
Can you pull up Appendix D?
Right. But he did it on, on the, uh, condition that if we, if we cut back, um, you know, we cut back to some degree on the road, that it would be acceptable.
Yeah, I wouldn't say you.
We're willing to do.
He said that there were things that you could do, but he didn't.
We're willing, we're willing to do that. And, and, and moreover, the neighbor mentioned in his letter that there were driveways from its granted that, you know, were in a similar situation in the areas. So we're not, I don't think we're doing anything extraordinary. The, the code revisions that, um, that were cited at one point have to do with new roads, um, in my opinion, the way I read it, under the subdivision regulation. So we think we're, we're okay with that. And we obviously would have to do whatever needed to be done to, to modify that. And we don't think that's going to be a big deal.
No, it's basically landscaping there. I mean, cutting back a bush, it's not a big deal at all. And if you pull up Appendix E from, uh, from March, please. It's, um, not from March, that's the, uh, December. So he says, if they cut back the bank to gain the site distance, I would have no problem issuing a driveway.
Bank or bush? Right.
The bank, the bank.
Okay.
Yes, but if you go out to the site, as, as, as many of you have, it's been, it's a very slight modification. There's essentially.
Is the bank the one closer to?
If you stare at the driveway to the right, which is actually a hill.
You can't see it from the driveway.
Of course, I think we're trying to make this.
The implication has been that you've already cut through this area where your proposed driveway would be. When you re, let me finish, please. But what we've heard and what we've heard from Mr. Lyon also is that there will have to be more environmental impact on this curb where that rock outgrown is. That's not the end of it. What, what you've driven through there is not the end. There will be more work that has to be done on that curb. When Christian Moore was in the field, he thought that that curb and, and the view shed of the ability to see around it was quite severe and very difficult to manage. He thought there would have to be a lot cut down. So I don't think it's a simple take it down a bush.
The, the impact of.
We don't know what the impact is because we haven't seen anything about that.
We can pull back up the, the driveway slope.
Like I'm saying, we haven't seen any engineering for that. I, I am not, I don't know where we're going here.
Uh, uh, so, so.
Another point I would like to make is, may I?
Sure. Good.
I, I understand all your points. I'm not agreeing or disagreeing, I know where you're coming from. The fact that we can go back to the original plot and, and make a different determination doesn't mean we should. The fact that we can is also part of what our discussion has to be. Do we want to open that door and go back? And when we open that door and we go back to this one, what about the next person that wants to go back? And the next person that wants to go back? That's a discussion you have to have with this board. I don't expect a response from you now because I think we're trying to identify the deliberations we have to make. I get your point, but I just wanted to make my.
Can I make one more?
Well, I got the point that you said we can go back.
Yeah.
But I think we have to ask ourselves if we want to go back.
Okay. So you're raising some, uh, issues with the, um, the site distance and this issue with, um, the cut. So what I, I would like to do is, and you mentioned that you haven't gotten any information. So what I would like to do is, I would like to ask the board to keep the public hearing open to give us the opportunity to provide more information on that issue to you.
We'll talk about that.
Okay.
I know, we need to deliberate.
Okay, but I just wanted to let you know that I think we should have the chance to talk about that. But that, that is what the issue is.
Get that far.
Okay, thank you.
His public hearing, so I'm trying to think of the best order to do this. Maybe you ask for public comment if there's any.
Yeah, I would invite the public to listen to the content. So is there any numbers of a public hearing you wish on it? I asked you to come up, identify yourself.
Jeff Poynt, uh, of the 15 Acrohut Road, less than a half mile from this site. Uh, I just want to offer a very pedestrian perspective. I walk past that site every day. It is very disturbing that the applicant went ahead and did that cut. It is now an eyesore. They said they were not taking any major trees. There is a tree that's probably a hundred foot tall that, that fell probably as a result of erosion from that cut. It is an eyesore. And, uh, while they're endeavoring to make a compelling case that that might be the best site for the driveway, all going good, but they did act illegally, if I may put it that way. And they left an eyesore on the community, which is quite a disgrace. And I would urge the planning board to take that into consideration in reviewing this application. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Steve Wanchini, I live right next door to this property. And my couple of points I want to make is, public safety. The driveway where it was cleared illegally does not give you proper site distance. The whole argument that the superintendent says you can cut the bank down, that bank is seven feet tall, only about five feet off the road. You're going to create a huge scar. And the rock ledge on this map is even above, beyond that. So to try to get the site distance, having one on illegally, if you can do that right on Acro Hook Road, but it's just going to be a huge scar right there on Acro Hook Road. The argument about Seteris Drive or Parket. Lot B is landlocked. I lived next door when it used to be a Tyler Estate, and it was one big property. When Bill Seteris subdivided it, he had to put the right of way in because lot B was sold first, and it's landlocked. So the access is through a private driveway, and all property has to have access to a public road. Lot, the one that was just built, huh? Lot three does use Parket. I mean, they access Acro Hook Road off the cul-de-sac. I believe originally, the plan was this was supposed to be a town road when it was subdivided and all the houses were built. Lot number two cannot access Acro Hook Road. When that lot is built, it has to use Parket. There's no site distance, it's very steep all around the perimeter. So I don't know why they feel they have to use Acro Hook Road when it's right from the beginning in 1983, it was, and everybody that bought property there knew this. Even people own lot one, and they're trying to put their driveway, their driveway is legal. It comes off the cul-de-sac. It doesn't have to go to the end of the cul-de-sac to come off. But they have a legal driveway. So I mean, putting the driveway on Acro Hook Road, public safety issue, and it's a legal issue.
Well, again, I do think we did get a lot of information tonight. You know, I think there is a benefit to helping the public and I look into continuing it. It might be a benefit for the board, though, to kind of start thinking about this. If you have thoughts on it now, it might be helpful for the applicant to know where you're leaning. That way, it gives them a chance to either provide more information or to consider another option.
Would you like to go first?
I have a question, and as Jim had mentioned this before, a number of times, about the new DTC regulations, including not just the typical large 12 and a half acre wetlands, but additionally, rural pools. And it seems as though the, the body that's on this site would fall within that. But without some sort of a determination, it's hard to say. The applicant is resistant to the idea of building within that buffer, and now that buffer is going to be extended beyond what we're used to, which is the 100 feet.
Well, the review buffer, the area that needs to be reviewed. So my understanding was, standing on the webinar with DTC, was that when they mapped these, they did it using aerial imagery and some on the ground, whatever. So they weren't really accurate per se. They're relatively accurate, but not necessarily 100% accurate. So they always had a buffer on, and then you had to go and go back to DTC to get a determination. This was before January 1st. That buffer has just decreased significantly. I believe it's 800 feet now, instead of, I think it was 500 before. 100 foot buffer is the town buffer, and that's, you know, where the town gets involved. But there's both the wetland on this property, and there's a wetland across from Acro Hook Road, across the street from Acro Hook Road. Either way, we're going to address it through a determination of where the driveway goes, and because of both of those. Even if this rural pool isn't considered a rural pool, we don't know until it gets assessed. And that's kind of what we're seeing with work now, is everything has to be assessed, like different levels of wetland and their importance. And then maybe I guess they take essentially what the DTC may or may not acquire, and then there's the rural pools. And then in two years, they're going to add a lot more wetlands to the maps. But there's nothing official that tells us exactly where the wetlands are. Everything has to be checked.
Okay, so it's not like there's an extended buffer zone, it's just the review-
It's an extended review zone.
Extended review zone. Because the disturbance associated with the construction of the house and the onsite waste treatment system would fall within that 300 foot zone, because they're right at the, right at the edge of the 100 foot buffer, at least the way that this was mapped out.
I believe that the pool would have been reviewed prior to January versus as they are being viewed now. The difference, yeah, I think there's, I think that the pool would have been reviewed.
And also the approval for this? On the plans, I saw this, Department of Health approval dates to 2003, I think. If there are time limit on those approvals?
I'm not really sure.
Because this is, I've been through this with a number of applications with elevated systems that they really want to know the details of that stack before they approve it. And it seems like this kind of-
Well, again, because it's before the planning board, I think we have to get BOH view before the planning board to make an approval, because it's before the planning board. Whether or not, whether or not, you know, that, that 2003 approval still stands, it might, I'd prefer a question is being here, I'm not going to call it.
Probably a question on that. Just a simple point, because we already renewed it, but with duration.
Okay, but it wasn't on the more recent plans that I saw.
I just want to bring up one thing. When we were, when we started working at this, as I recall, Gretchen was able to pull a number of files going back to the beginning of time of this project, I believe, and all of the original reviews. And one thing that I noted at the time was that there was extensive discussion at the time that the planning board took this action in the time about the views, and how far you could see, and the curve. And it was my impression in looking at that, that that was one of the major discussion points that they undertook, and that they were concerned then about how far you could see around that curve, that rock outdrop. I don't think Acro Hook Road has changed. I think the reasons that the planning board back then did what they did in terms of what became Barrett Tyler was because of the field conditions that they observed when they were doing the subdivision. So for me, if you're asking for comments, that's one of the things that keeps resonating with me, that that has not materially changed. The road is the road, I'm making my comments. And we're not here to debate, we're just-
I'm not trying to debate. When you, when you want me, when I have, when you're comfortable with me talking, I'd like to say something.
So I'm opening it up for others. You know, Kim has suggested we share some thoughts, and that's one of, one of my observations in looking at the way that we work.
Yeah, I noticed in your notes, you mentioned that the area that would be required to be used for a driveway is already cleared. This is on the so-called cul-de-sac. And a stone base of unknown depth has been put down from Acro Hook Road to a point somewhere near the cul-de-sac. Now, there's been discussion about cutting more trees. We walked the property, it seemed that that area was pretty clear up to the property line of the applicant. So trees on lot three should not be required to be cut.
No, I don't believe so. And I, essentially based on that site visit, that when I went out there, I noticed as I was walking up there, there is stone down, there is a cleared area somewhere, I didn't measure the width. But it is cleared up somewhere, you know, up into this area. If they don't grow, there is, there is stone down.
Right, that was my impression as well. I, I share the concern about anything happening to a rock, a rock or a hill on Acro Hook. I don't think that we want to be carving things back so we can have yet another driveway. I think that any ability to reduce driveway cuts is good, and that's what this intends to do. So that's my view.
About last March, they cut all the trees on the proposed driveway. And it was like a Friday evening or Saturday, and an absolute horrible mess on Sunday. The wetland across the road, the whole road was wet, it was full of mud. The land on the applicant's side of the road was wet. It was, it was just a total mess, and it still is today. That they, that they removed only one large tree, but since they were all removed and chopped up that weekend, we have no idea how many large trees they chopped down. Well, we did walk the property, we walked Barrett Tyler. It's up higher, it's more level. There's stone walls there, but they can be avoided. There's wetlands. I don't think there is bigger wetland or as, or wet. There's a wetland right across the road, literally across the road. Which, if it's across the road, it's going to go under the road. So if you go through the top of the property, if you do, there is one spot where you can cross through the wetland, and that can be done with a very simple cove work. You just cross through it and not destroy very little, very little. It was a much, much better area.
Couple things. One, you showed an example of a stone wall reconstruction, which I do not think matches the vocabulary of the stone walls that actually exist on the property. I think there's consideration that those walls were indigenous, which is very different from colonial, in which case the way in which it's formulated is very different, and should be really considered when you're disrupting them, and certainly when you're putting them in. The bank, which, you know, it's like a whole nother piece of it to me, because that bank has a stone formation that is extremely important, that I found, that was hand-cut, and has a solstice alignment. And so absolutely not should there be any touching of those stone structures, hands down. So I just, I just, the, the wetlands is an extremely important feature here that we all need to consider. But those stone formations are also very important and need to be considered. And that bank had, and I showed it when I was there with you, it, it's, it's important, and it's not just cut in a bush. Definitely not on that bank.
I, I, I believe the path up Barrett Tyler, it does involve, once it gets onto the applicant's property, it does involve some construction either in the wetland buffer or across a wetland with a box culvert or something like that. And it, it would require disruption of a stone wall that exists on the property. I would think it's much more impactful to disrupt the stone wall that runs along Acro Hook, where everybody drives, as opposed to the stone wall that's up the hill where it's visible to the applicant.
There's also a large section of stone wall up towards the top of the driveway that was, looked like literally clouded with all those air, which was a pretty significant structure that was an extreme disappointment to see. So there's actually a couple of stone walls that were destroyed across the current driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. And I agree with everyone on this board, I don't think there's any reason to look at any of the other access.
And I think it would, it would be fundamentally unfair if we left no alternative. But I think there's a very viable alternative off of Barrett Tyler, which is the drive that was mapped. So I, I don't yet see why that's not a possibility.
Can I make another comment?
Yes, you may.
Look, two things about the stone wall and the wetland. In New York State, you're not allowed to take down a stone wall that's on a property line or altered in any case, which they already did. Stone walls we're talking about that are up in the property, they're within the property lines, they can do whatever they want. Wetlands, you're not allowed to build in wetlands, doesn't mean you can't cross wetlands. There is a provision that if you cross wetlands, you can create more wetlands to offset what you've disturbed. So the argument that because there's wetland, you can't put a driveway in there, should not, there's ways around that in New York State. It allows you to increase the size of your wetlands if you have to. You can't build in wetlands, but a driveway is a way. And the map I originally looked at, the wetlands don't go as far as what was shown on their plan. Also, I grew up there, I used to cross country ski back there. There is a farm road that comes off of, I suppose, Seteris Drive, that goes along in there, exists a stone wall that's very gradual, and gives you access to that property. All the trees are cleared up to the top, but not the cul-de-sac. There's a well that's been drilled here, a test well. If you go past that test well right along here, it's like the Wood Road, that gives you access to that property. So yeah, if you want to, if the town or anybody has to build a cul-de-sac, there are more trees that have to come down, but to give access to this property, the roadway's already there. And I remember when they put it in, it's a pretty sturdy base.
Are you suggesting that we continue the public hearing?
Yes, well, did you want the-
I will, I will go back, just wanted to clarify.
I mean, I think that there was a lot of information the planning board has now discussed, and there have been public comments that have been addressed. You know, the applicant did ask for a continuation. I think that would be a good idea, but I leave that to you, if you want to consider that.
Yes, I just want to echo that. We would like the chance to respond to some of the comments made this evening on the issues with site distance, as well as some of the comments from the public. And in addition, Madam Chair, you referenced that the clerk went back to the dawn of time, or whenever the special was-
It feels like it does.
To get to the, all those records. Originally, I was advised that they were not retrievable. I, I myself would like to independently look at those reference. I think they're, they're open to the public, if I could do that.
I actually will tell you, I did find them afterwards, they were not with the other ones that we had. So I did happen to actually just find them.
Find the what? I'm sorry.
Find some, we had a few of them.
Yeah.
But the ones that I, that we could not find, in another file.
And you found those?
So I did find those.
Okay, so-
So going back to old files, I found those among them.
Well, that's great, so-
So anytime you want to make an appointment, come in and look at them.
That would be great, because there's been numerous references to them in board discussions, there's been references to them in documentation. And I haven't seen them yet, I would like the chance to look at them. Especially with the issue that's being raised today. So we, we support the board's motion to continue, if that's what you're going to do. Thank you.
I think we are, and then I'll entertain a motion to continue until February 18th. May I have a motion?
So move.
Okay. Second, all of your pages.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And the final public hearing decision is Rock Bridge. We're having to Acro Hook Road, Cyclones, Special Use Credit, and wetlands. We're having 204, and on the minutes. Okay, I'm leaving. Are you standing? Yes, okay. She's only temporary, I mean, recuse yourself to the other. Okay, so. Jim has circulated to everybody the part three-
Jim has circulated to everybody the part three comments in draft form. We'll be opening him for public comment, but I'd like to start with any more speaking to Jim.
Can you speak into the microphone?
I try, I really do try. I would also encourage people to try and, you know.
Your microphone's off.
Sometimes people sit way in the back and say they can't hear me, so you're not way in the back, so I'll do my best to, to, like, bring the microphones. Winless, so. And then I say, any of you who wish to make a recommendation to the town board, that they get really good microphones, because we've been told that they don't even really record well sometimes on our dear friends' movies over there. So, we keep struggling with it, and I apologize. Thank you for reminding me. So, Jim, you have sent to all of us the draft part three comments. Is there anything you'd like to say by way of introduction before I ask for people's comments?
No, I think, you know, I sent out the part three, which is really, I'd say probably ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of it is the part two that I read, you know, word for word, which we'll have made at the end of last year. There's a little bit of extra commentary in there in the beginning, just kind of opening it. And then a paragraph or two based on the decision that was made. I'm really just looking for any comments you've had. Received one, Sharon, just about a typo that was in there. It was actually in the part two, and I threw it over, so, just a name. So, that's an easy fix. If there's anything you'd like to discuss, we're certainly here to do that tonight. Do you want to send me anything you can? And then, I know Brett Lyons is taking a look at it. We have some comments of, I don't think, any major content-related issues, just discussion items for some of the write-ups. And then, the idea would be to get those comments, any from you, so we can put a draft together and get that out for your final consideration, review by the public. But again, the vast majority of what's in the part three was some write-ups that I wrote out.
Kim, she needs a little time to wrap up her review. We want to make sure that we get the final draft out at least a week in advance of the next time we're going to be talking about it.
So, I will think, because I know that Rockledge has been on a two-week. I would like to, just for giving a week time to what, I have some other obligations this week that I might not be able to finish up by Monday, but if you could, I can aim to have it ready for posting around the week of February tenth, or February eighteenth maybe.
And let's review again the sequence, because this is before the zoning board of appeals, correct?
Yes.
And that is also important to the timeline for our review, right? We've got a couple of things going on here, so let's refresh our memory on that.
So, the, Rockledge is seeking a variance, an area variance from the zoning board of appeals. It's, they have two buildings, the manor house and the gatehouse, that are being adaptively reused. Under the code, you can have four units in either of those. They are seeking to, instead of having four in four, they are seeking to have six in the manor house, two in the gatehouse. So, they need a variance for those two additional ones in the manor house. It was in front of the zoning board back in, I believe, 2019 into 2020. Then, the applicant asked to postpone the public hearing at the ZBA while they were still working, you know, working with the planning board and getting through this. And also, the ZBA can't issue their decision until seeker is done. So, that has also been a reason for why it's been a little delayed at the ZBA. So, they just came back to the ZBA in December 2024, as the seeker review was wrapping up a little bit, you know, the planning board had gone through part two. So, came back in front of the ZBA. It was meant to be for public hearing on January, but there was an issue with the noticing. So, at January's ZBA meeting last week, the ZBA has noticed it for February fifteenth? Thank you, sorry. What is it, February, we need the third Wednesday, so it would be February nineteenth. Also, when the ZBA first reviewed it, there were two members of the current board. So, that means that there's three new members of the zoning board that are currently reviewing it. So, basically, what that means is that we likely won't get a decision from the board, the ZBA board, on the variances until March after the public hearing. Because I think the ZBA wants to hear the public hearing, wants to do a site visit. You know, especially for the new, not only just because it's been several years, but also there are some new board members on there. So, anyway, early decision from the ZBA was anticipated for March, but a public hearing will be for February. And again, the board, the ZBA can't issue their area variance decision until the seeker is finished. So, that's kind of the logistical circle that we're in right now.
Okay. Let me report that we have received an initial response from SHPO through the PRIS system. And let me just, for the record, say that SHPO is making a couple of recommendations. They are recommending reducing the thickness of the glass privacy petitions, framing, maximizing the use of clear glass where possible, and avoiding the middle of columns as a location. And their second comment of three was for the stone barn, they're recommending one-over-one double-cone windows, a double barn door at the entrances, and an asphalt shingle roof replacement to retain the barn's appearance. And their third comment is we understand that the redevelopment project is under review by the federal commercial tax credit program. Federal commercial rehabilitation tax credit part two application for the Rockledge project must be reviewed and approved by the National Park Service. So, as we've indicated before, that's a review that's going on concurrently, but is conducted by the park service as opposed to SHPO. The only thing I've asked for clarification on, and Mark, we may know or set, they do state, please be aware that if the project will involve state or federal permits, funding or licenses, it may be subject to review under Section 1409 of Parks and Recreation Preservation Law, or Section 106 of the National Park Preservation Act. I'm assuming, and we'll be asking for clarification, that there are no federal permits, funding, or licenses that we would be waiting for. Is that correct? So, none of the approvals from D E C would be in those categories, right? Okay. So, I've just asked for clarification that this wraps up their review, because they don't state it explicitly, but I've been in touch with the reviewer to ask for that clarification. But I know we've been waiting and asking for this, so we now have some things on the file for that. All right, so, comments on Jim's draft, anything substantive? We're waiting, as we said, for Kim's final review, but is there anything anyone would like to bring to the board's attention? And then I will open it to the public. All right, well, I won't hold your feet to the fire tonight, but as you said, Kim's pretty tied up this week, so if you want to take another look at it before the end of the week, and get any additional comments that need to happen.
Sometime later.
Okay, should be a little extra time.
Monday, Monday.
All right, no later, no later. All right, the rules for public hearing, stand. I would ask you, encourage you, invite you to come with a microphone and make your comments. And if someone else has already made them, we do have one more agenda item tonight, it might take some time, so appreciate your cooperation. So, go ahead.
I don't think there would be any other people rushing up to the microphone. Jeff Pope, again, fifteen Accra Hook Road. Just wanted to offer a couple of points of information related to the wastewater discharge permitting process. D E C has not as yet begun their special use permit review process, primarily because they have not received flow data from the applicant. So, it's something that they need before they can even start that process. And also, as was discussed several times today, I wonder if the facility will be, if the applicant will be required to apply to D E C for a jurisdictional determination on wetlands, given the new wetland regulations. So, I think those are two important considerations vis-à-vis the seeker review. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Good evening, David Winer, three oh six Accra Hook Road. I live about four miles down the road from the supposed Rockledge development. I'd like to begin by expressing my support for hearing economists' requests. Then we continue this hearing, so my attorney, who is unable to attend this hearing tonight, drew a scheduling conflict committee presentation today.
We just told you we are going to do that.
Okay, I'm sorry, this is hard to hear.
Okay.
This evening, I'm going to comment on your discussion of transportation questions in the toll and violence review assessment. I appreciate that you put a lot of time and effort to reviewing the Rockledge proposal, but I'm sorry to tell you that your conclusions were reached, in my view, were arbitrary and precious. You relied on the opinions of the traffic consultant, Steven Montea, whose opinion was bought and paid for by the developer, and evidenced obvious deficiencies in bias, which I and others detailed in the document we submitted to you on August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Today, I will limit myself to observations about your discussion of the environment impact of traffic, and I'll express my opinion about it. Only of your members has recounted not once, but twice, how he encountered a bus at a pinch point on the road near Rockledge. He was able to pass the bus with no problem. No one on the committee challenged his comments. This demonstrates a clear inappropriate dismissiveness of substantive concerns raised by the public documented by us in some detail. You have completely failed to consider what happens at this pinch point and many other points along roads in the area if there happens to be a pedestrian, a bicyclist, or horse rider at one of these pinch points at the same time the bus and road number arrive. Many of us have raised a serious concern repeatedly over the years in that this board bases its decisions on these superficial and frankly, silly comments. These same, the same member of your board also stated that he frequently passed bicyclists on his driveways on the area near Rockledge. He said they looked unperturbed. If the level of bicyclist perturbance was relevant, then this board should make that determination as to whether non-vehicular use of the road are perturbed, and if their concerns reveal real risk, and you should do this in a more diligent and professional manner. As a bicyclist, I can assure you that I am perturbed by the increasing number of auto and delivery truck drivers who speed by me too close for safety on the very road around me. Although we have brought to your attention the equestrian and horse chartered carriages that use the roads periodically, you never once considered this fact, as far as I can tell. In conclusion, in my opinion, your assessment that traffic generated by proposed Rockledge development has little or no impact is arbitrary and precious. Your discussion of traffic provides overwhelming emphasis that this board is the wrong form for a fair hearing in the issues we have raised over the years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Winer, do you have a written version of your remark?
Yeah, I'll take that.
Thank you.
All right, who's next?
Good evening, Winer, this is Mike Lenta. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
So, I live at two twenty Ly Road, and I've lived there since nineteen sixty-eight. I'm retiring, of course, you're, and I'm an aspiring beekeeper. I've been keeping bees for nine years. As such, I'm attuned with the environment and nature, and one of my concerns is I'm worried about habitat loss and more toxins in our environment. And not just about honeybees, but over the two thousand different species of pollinators that live in the United States. The seeker process was enacted, I think, approximately in nineteen seventy-five, fifty years ago, with very little updating since. At the time, very little was known about pharmaceuticals, micro and nano plastics, and many other chemicals that will be going into the falls river. I've stopped by the Rockledge site many times, their outflow site this summer. And there, we were in dirt, there was no stream whatsoever. Earlier, a few years ago, Mark said there's supposed to be positive outflow for this system to work. I believe this alone should be a red flag and need a positive declaration for the seeker process. So, no, I'm not saying anything new. But Rockledge has not said anything new that we would like them to say. Like, they would reduce the amount of units that they would be putting in, so it doesn't double the size of the units on that stretch of the road. To put in a state-of-the-art wastewater treatment plant, not one that is already old and faulty. And restore the manor house, such that it could be used in a positive way for the community to justify the granting of the special use permit. So, as the Madam Chairman has already said today, just because something can be done, doesn't mean that it shouldn't be done. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Could you speak maybe for a critical point?
It's hard to hear you.
Why is my mic so loud?
I just wanted to say, you know, I appreciate you conducting the seeker process in front of you. I guess that was part of the deal anyway. But, you know, I share some of my neighbors' concerns about how certain things were decided. But I did want to point out one thing in particular, and I'm really wrestled with this, because Accra Hook Road is very eclectic and has evolved over two hundred years. Like Mike's house, what is one of the original ones, and, you know, there are ones being built right now. So, it's hard to say that there's one particular style on Accra Hook Road. But I would like to, I was a little taken aback by some of the discussion about how this integrates into the neighborhood. This, the mansion, the mansion, I don't think anybody has any real issue with the adaptive reuse portion of this project. It's a good use for those old buildings. But we're talking about seven, ten thousand square foot buildings within close proximity to each other, that all look like each other, and have a private security guard, apparently, based on the conversation that was held here. There is nothing like that on Accra Hook Ly, BURB. It's just, it's not rural. It sounds very sort of suburban, Greenwich, Chappaqua, kind of thing. So, I'm just saying, keep that in mind. There are elements of it that are made to be rural, but it really is, there's nothing like it. So, it would be another style in an already diverse area.
Patty Lenta, under two twenty Ly Road. I want to address primarily the seeker. I want to address primarily the CECL analysis by the planning board concerning number three, the impacts on surface water. The last item, K, the proposed action may require the construction of a new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities. The board decided that there was no or small impact with respect to that item. I have an outstanding question. The town zoning law, I think it's called the E code, has a very extensive chapter 120 on wetlands. And it really outlines the town planning board, the town's responsibility in general to protect our wetlands. Specifically, there is a, there's words that say that that it's prohibited to have a wastewater treatment plant for new construction. So I have an outstanding question to the planning board about the legality of this defunct wastewater treatment plant servicing 36 new construction units. I don't understand the reading, and I really would like an answer. I think perhaps it should be part of the CECL analysis. The question's been asked by me several times. I don't know how to get the answer. Another point I'd like to make is that a few of the neighbors have suggested that maybe the wastewater treatment plant is not the correct way to deal with the development at Rockledge. Perhaps in-ground septic is the correct way. And we have gotten a very quick answer that, no, can't do it, it's too rocky. Well, maybe the planning board should be asking the question, what kind of density could be supported by the in-ground septic systems? Maybe you can't support all the density they want there, but it is possible to not have effluent run into our wetlands and into the Fallsburg Creek. I'd like that question addressed. Another point I'd like to make is that we already have, in the town of Rhinebeck, a wastewater treatment plant that pours its output into the Rhinebeck Hill. So this town has an opportunity to truly understand what the impact is on a wetland and on one of our precious freshwater watershed waters. The Rhinebeck Hill could be tested before the village treatment plant and after the village treatment plant. And we can understand just what we're doing to the wetlands instead of just barreling into destroying another watershed. Thank you.
As we discussed earlier, we're going to be continuing the public hearing until... As I said earlier, we're going to be continuing the public hearing until February 18th. Planning board, are there any additional comments you'd like to make? If not, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until February 18th. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
No extension. John, anything else you'd like to add?
Do you want to announce to the public that the plan to have written a resolution about...
We can't, I'm sorry, we can't.
Yeah, it's going to enter key post down the town website in advance.
Right. We mentioned earlier, when I began this, that the goal is that Kim is going to be working on this and that we will have the, we will have it posted. Kim is saying by February 10th, the date you were proposing.
That's what I'm proposing.
Yeah, she's proposing that after her review, what we will have available will be posted on the town website.
I'd say honor about the 10th.
Honor about the 10th.
Just giving Joan a chance, just in case something...
Right. And that would be the meeting that we're proposing this go-to is the 18th. So that would be a week and a day. That meeting is a day late because we're up against President's Day. So that planning board meeting will be Tuesday. So she's looking to get that on, honor about the 10th. And so be looking for that for you to review again. Okay, so I think I've had a motion and a second, and everybody's in favor. So thank you very much. Look forward to seeing you again. I guess we're signing, and we, I guess. On your business this evening, we have all received our adjournment, and I want to thank him and applaud him for his comments. And congratulations. At this point, while doing this part of the law, I would like to continue the discussion about how you all agree. My goal is that we will be able to see, to pass a resolution forwarding this to the town boards in response to their requests for our comments. So at the end of Jim's, Jim's comments, we'll discuss what you tend to do. If there's any, excuse me, I'm trying to finish the meeting here. You know, I'm having trouble. It's okay. So, let me turn it over to Jim.
So what I put together is a draft of all the comments that I received up until this point, with the exception of Edna, it said updated version of the memo. They did not get a chance to incorporate into this. So we can certainly talk about that if you want to, any changes related to that. What I put together are the comments broken out kind of by subject area, just so we had some way of organizing them. And I just, you know, I put a few comments in the cover letter here that I don't think would go along with the resolution, but I just wanted to note for you, and I'm just going to note tonight, in that during the course of the review that's been done by the planning board of this project that started with the referral request that came to you from the town board. And the memo, well, I guess the referral memo that you sent back to the town board on July 6, 2022. There have been a lot of comments made regarding the viability of the site for the proposed project. However, since this site was specifically selected as one of two locations for potential workforce housing through the zoning amendment process conducted by the town board, and also they have been on the road with the CECL. I don't really know that this board, the planning board, should really focus on whether or not the development is appropriate for the site. That's kind of already been determined by the town board. I think the purpose really of what we're doing here is to consider what can be done to make the proposed project the best potential project for that site, considering that the concept has been approved and that the CECL for that concept has also been approved by the town board. You know, as we discussed regularly, I'm just going to say it for the purposes of the meeting. You know, the planning board doesn't make the rules, the town board does. We don't, we don't turf with the rules. The zoning board, the field does that, and the zoning administrator does that. This board is tasked with utilizing the regulations that exist to ensure that the projects that are put forward essentially meet those regulations. That said, you know, the review with the planning board has asked to begin back in November was to assess the project utilizing just the site plan criteria and workforce housing regulations that are out there, which haven't been laid down yet on the site. And that's kind of where this memo request came from, from the town board. They're in the process of the gulping, whatever that final workforce housing regulation will be, that they will place over the property, which is currently Zoned Village Gateway. There were some comments made about, you know, this doesn't meet the village gateway standards, but that's not the proper standard to use when reviewing this project because that's not the zoning that would be used for this project. It will be whatever will come to us from the town board. So they're early drafting the law. They, the applicant has asked us to hold on reviewing the project any further. And the town board is essentially asking for comments on the project. I think one to make it a better project and also anything specific to the zoning criteria that has kind of created any issues or concerns that you have. And that's essentially what I have in the memo for you today, are those concerns and issues that I've heard, either in writing or things that we discussed at the past meeting or maybe two. This doesn't go back to that original memo, it'll be back in 2020. So those comments, they're out there for the initial review. This is now kind of looking forward, utilizing the concept plan that's going forward. So I just kind of put that caveat out there that that's where this came from. I didn't go back to whether or not the site is viable for this. I think that's been determined. So these really reflect, really reflect, you know, how, your thoughts on how to make it, potentially make it better. Again, not bringing in some of Edna's comments from the military.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you, but I did read that in your memo. And I'm a little taken aback because, you know, by what you just said, the town board makes the rules. I would say it's better put that the town board has made the rules. It's actually in the code how this workforce housing process is supposed to play out. And one of the first steps is that the concept plan is reviewed by the planning board. So I would take it from that that we have the ability to call into question the appropriateness of this site, not that it, that ship has already sailed. Because I don't think we've had our turn. If we did have our turn, it was back in 2022 when we entered some very negative comments about it, many of which have yet to be addressed satisfactorily. And I think there's also a requirement for the town board to reply in writing if they're to go against what our assessment is. I may be wrong about that.
I agree with you, but I do agree with you that the review of the concept plan was done in 2022. That was the board's, you know, official review of the concept plan. There was then the ability to comment on and begin during the CECL process. And we did discuss that at the end of last year. And the board did not report any comments on CECL review process being done by the town board at that time. So I believe that you should just look at this as if it's zone, even though it's not put down on the BG property per se at the moment. That's what the town board's working on. You should look at it as if that's the case and the zoning is already there. John, you know, can you comment on that? We've talked about it before. I think you're in general agreement with me that the site is, it's the town board's decision.
It's crystallized that this is the site for the workforce housing. Does that include the number of units? Does that include the placement on the site? And does that include the way in which the selection of this site runs counter to many of the requirements that are spelled out in workforce housing? For instance, the issue of walkability.
That is a comment, and there's walkability, absolutely. And those are the types of comments, I think, that can go back to do discuss how to make it a better site and where you're concerned that it doesn't meet the necessary requirements.
And also, isn't the 80 units that's stated as a maximum in the workforce housing? So if 80 units is too many for this site, given its shape, I mean, that's, I think, worthy of discussion and not something that we should take as set in stone.
I mean, I think you could put a comment back, you could certainly provide a comment back to the town board. And again, this memo is supposed to be, you know, reflect the general agreement of the board. If they take a vote on it, make sure that, you know, the general view. Some people may agree or disagree on a couple, someone may not agree with the memo at all. That's your priority. We have to have a general agreement, such a forum, I think, to move it forward with whatever comments are here. But the number of units, yeah, you can certainly go back and talk about that. But the concept plan, you know, again, has been approved by the town board, and the CECL has been done on that concept by the 80 units. If you want to propose change to that that would reduce that intensity, you can certainly make that, you know, a statement. But I think that they have made their decision. They, they see the concept plan as it's been drafted moving forward. I would say generally in that, in that way.
There is language in the code that states, that certainly strongly suggests that the site should be appropriate to areas around it and to what's, you know, what the goals are for the town. And the site is unable to do that because the buildings are so close together that there really isn't right now any possibility for outdoor space for people for each building, appropriate landscaping and so forth. So if you look at it from that point of view, one way to achieve that would be to reduce the number of buildings. There might be other ways to achieve that. But I think it should be stated that we think it's important that that happen, that the site be improved.
But when, Jim's, I'm just looking at what Jim had drafted on your new sheds and design. And I think he states additional landscaping between buildings. You know, these are some of your words. And he's saying should be provided. So I mean, I think that's pretty clear that we're saying...
But it's not just landscaping.
I'm just looking, I'm looking at this as an example about Jim's planning to incorporate specific comments like that that we've taken from what we received. I didn't find it to be... I thought we hit the point, especially under the section on walkability, which I believe is one that's been brought up many times in terms of one of the most important desirables, if you will, with this, both in terms of its relationship to the village comprehensive plan and to walkability in general.
And getting to something that Sean said at the last meeting, which I think is a very good point, the issues that we raised should be positive in nature. And I think that there are things that the applicant doesn't seem to have considered, even though they've been mentioned in the past, as far as seeking an easement through Wells Manor to Village Green and grabbing agreements with those separate owners to provide access without trespass. And, you know, we've had so many of these issues with shared driveways. You know, I think that they need to be very clear that this project is not going to sail without getting the necessary easements, some of which are actually on Astor Drive.
Do you want to have that walkability? Do you want to make that specific?
Well, I, yeah, I think one of the things that's been said again and again about this project is that it has access on Ryslip Road and on Astor Drive. But without the durable easements that run with the land, I don't think they can claim that because the property doesn't actually touch Astor Drive. You have to drive through Wells Manor, you have to drive through the Gardens property, there's a parcel there, and you have to go through the village property. And then you have to cross where the village wastewater treatment system has a dump hall in order to get to the Woods property that has a walkway on it. Otherwise, you got to walk in the street. And I think it's just asking too much of people that...
How would you make this better?
They would need to clarify those easements and maybe show a little bit more about the surrounding context. At the last meeting, John Clark had mentioned, he said, well, you look at the comprehensive plan. I went and I did look at it. And there is a very attractive treatment of this parcel, but it involves that connection. And everything about the selection of this site is that it really rests upon its proximity to the village. It is separated from the village by geography. And that's, it's an important feature that needs to be contended with. You can't just say to people, why don't you just walk around? Because that, that doesn't satisfy the requirement. And my fear is that this is going to move ahead without all these little pieces being taken care of. Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll handle that. And then it never gets handled. And then the people who live there end up living in isolation, which is not the goal of this project. People should be able to live there in connection with the community and in decent accommodations where they have a great place to live and they have ready access to the village. And I'm not seeing it as part of this plan that's been submitted. So I'll get down to my...
Well, I'm just trying to put to how you captured that.
We could put a comment in there about, you know, looking for, you know, something about access through Wells Manor to Village Green being provided. The easements should be considered and show more about the, you know, connections to adjacent properties. One thing, just to blunt up here, just so you're aware, the property at the end here, we do not go actually go technically through Wells Manor. These two parcels are owned by the village. So their connection is coming from their parcel through the village property. Just to see where Wells Manor actually stops before you get to the treatment plant. So that's village, village owns the road here, and the village actually owns the road parcel.
Okay.
Just as a technical, just so you're aware.
All right. No, I wasn't aware of that.
So that one is going through, you know, with coordination with the village for that access to the local property. It's not actually Westman.
Would they not still have to get, first of all, some sort of... Would they not still have to get, first of all, some sort of an agreement from the village that that's, that's okay for them to traverse through there? And also some sort of a plan at least for a walkway alongside the road that so that people aren't walking in the street?
Well, the, I know the sidewalk on Astor didn't go out this far. I don't know, I don't remember exactly.
No, it ends across from the woods because the woods owns that parcel along the south side of Astor.
So there's, so there's the gap, you know, there's a gap along Astor.
Right.
To get to here, but I had included a comment saying that there are no sidewalks or pedestrian accommodations headed north on the parcel to Astor Drive. And I think that's a memory that should be considered. Where, where you go from Astor Drive over, that's something that has to be, you know, it's obviously considered by the village. It's in, it's in the village and on Village property.
So Craig, can you, can you provide to Jim the citations to the section of the comp plan that you looked at? Because.
I think there's a, I think the connectivity comment is important, not only from the standpoint of the planning board, but I think that this is something that may be important to the town board, needs to be emphasized in order to increase its profile on their radar screen. But one of the things that's motivating the town board is, is its desire to bring an affordable housing project to fruition so that that opportunity can be available to the community. But one of the principles, or one of the things that affordable housing is supposed to aspire to is to blend to the greatest extent possible into the existing community so that residents of affordable housing are not in isolation. The idea is to create as seamless a fabric as possible. So from that standpoint, connectivity will be an important issue. And I think it's worthwhile to put that on the town board's radar screen and to ask them to give some more consideration to that.
Also, this is within the LWRA. So the LWRP policies play a role in this. And that is one of the policies that we should be encouraging development in proximity to where development is already happening. But at the same time, preserve the rural character of the surrounding town and create that distinction. And if done correctly, you could put these buildings so that they seem like they are right at the edge of the village, rather than something that.
A part of the village.
Part of the village, yeah. And, and still maintain that buffer. It's problematic when you clear cut an enormous swath through the property in order to level things out and put in driveways and that sort of thing.
And I suggested that we look at the possibility, or the town board look at the possibility of an alternate route to the driveway. Would you all take a look at that?
Well, I noticed, Jim, you're just in number two, you're just, it's interesting that the word connectivity has come up because you're talking about walkability. And I wonder if that needs to just be strengthened a little bit now that there is walkability and connectivity. Maybe emphasize and getting that word in there and making the point that you had made here about connection to Village Green and the possibilities that are out there. I know they've been discussed and obviously they've been discussed because we ended up in a village comprehensive plan. So I don't think we're bringing up something that does maybe reinforce the fact that we see it as an important opportunity.
Right.
Yeah, you have to look at the top.
Just one thing that I just wanted to point out, there are no plans off this piece of property, right, at this time? But this is a stop road. There, there is a potential in the future that that could be connected if something came in here. There's no, there's no proposal for that, there's nothing, you know, going on in that regard. But it has been, you know, set up in a way that that could potentially connect.
So let me just say, you would like to see this top road.
I think it's important to include the top of the lines on there because that dotted line is actually a stone wall that's like high up on a ridge.
Yes.
And so, you know, what, how does this, when finally constructed, we have to assume that there's going to be a way to get through. And they're not going to be able to do it without permission from the adjacent owner. And if that's, if that's the one that goes through Wells Manor and into Village Green, that's one set of circumstances. If it goes toward Oak Street, I think that's a different set of circumstances because now you're going through, you know, some, some guy's driveway, but it's a very small lot.
The town board has to be realistic about it. There'll be desire paths where if you don't provide the connectivity, it'll come about on its own.
That's a very good point, yeah, if we're going to find a way.
So I guess all my points, you know, so there is the potential for some day for connection here, right? Or if there needed to be one further up, you could, you know, pretty easily look at having some other connection somewhere else along this driveway. It would take some work and some engineering, but you could certainly do that. It's not out of their own, you know, possibility. So there, there are opportunities, I think, for, you know, future potential connections. It's not shown on here, but you could from a budget perspective and an engineering perspective, it's not that hard to do anything. You know, in flatlands, it's not super steep there like ours is on some other parts. There is a stop road here.
Yeah.
And then from this point down, we wouldn't want to do anything because this is where it gets steep and this is getting closer to our road. So, you know, I think opportunities exist in the future for something to potentially connect if, if that's where it goes. And the village comp plan, I think, does discuss, you know, something happening on some of the property with that. Again, this is the village line, so that's also out of our jurisdiction, you know, towards what happens over there. But absolutely, take your point, we will strengthen that a little bit.
Can you just move that out just a little bit? No, I'm sorry, give it direction. Yeah, okay, stop. Can I just, I want to make this point about seeking an alternate road up. I understand you have to use this, but if they were able to go over and join this, which does not require clear cutting trees or filling hillside, you know, you'd have some excavation in here, but it would be minor compared to what's going on here. If they were able to do that, you would have tall trees here that would be screening what's going on on top of the hill. And this would be forest. It would be an incredibly dramatic change that would allow this parcel to still be beautiful and scenic from Line Cliff Road. And I think it deserves serious consideration.
Isn't that what Jim is saying in 5A? Where he actually says, "Kirk driveway shall be used if feasible" to include screening a building? And I thought that that was what the point.
I don't think so. Maybe it could be just a little more specific, like enter at the proposed place and for like what she just proposed, right? Like a little more specific of the alternative solution.
So there are two things I'm just going to point out, and I'm not defending the engineer in any way, but just want to note, you can certainly, you know, and they could certainly come in here and, and potentially bring the driveway, you know, closer to the village line. But as you get here, this is very, very steep, as you know. So this, this becomes, you know, again, another, another issue similar to what you have here. I, I can't discuss what's going on here, but part of the reason this is cleared is that this is a stormwater management policy. So I've talked to Andy a lot about this. He's actually pulled this tree line quite a bit since the first proposal, because I've been pushing this pretty hard and I've never got a chance. This is cleared, my understanding is, because they need to do obviously grading for the road, but he's also got the stormwater detention down here. I've asked him to pull it as tight as he can. This is, this is where you got it. I'm not saying you could do more. But there is this big stormwater detention basin down here that does have to go somewhere to deal with the stormwater runoff. And my understanding, from talking with him, I'm an engineer, so we prefer to page you if you want to discuss this further and if you do have some comments regarding, you know, grading drains and things, is, you know, can this, can this change further? Could we pull this back some, how, or change that? But that, that is part of the discussion. That's all I just wanted.
Yeah, but the, the reason that all of this has to happen is people's answer is fill. In order to fill, you have to spread it out.
Correct.
So that destroys the trees near the top of the hill that would stream.
Right, on this side. The only way to get around that would be to take.
The other thing that I wanted to ask is there are mixed in here, there are recommendations as things to be done, there are pointing to areas of the zoning law that are not being met. And I'm not sure it's clear that our board requires some way to deal with parts of this application that do not meet the zoning law. That we require either that things get changed or that variances get applied for, or that the town board write their legislation in such a way that these requirements are waived. And that's really not stated in the memo, and I think it should be.
I was approaching it from the perspective of, because Astor, I'm not sure I want to, if I want to suggest, I think, I think I want us to give them our cleanest, clearest recommendations for what Sean referred to as, when there's positive changes. And I think the town board will look at these things and make a determination in terms of whether it goes, whether things would go to his own board or whether they will waive them or not. And I think that's why this is changed, so that they ask us to hold up or do until they have them down or not. So that's my understanding of the sequence here, they ask us to stop, the applicant asks us to stop, to allow the town board time to develop the local law. And we've been asked to comment on what things we would like to see, what, what comments we have that will improve the application and therefore the design, if you will, and laying down the local law. That's my own presumption and my.
I think it'll just come back to us. I think, you know, they'll make some minor changes and then they'll come back to us for site plan review.
No, they're going to lay down the local law before it comes back.
Okay.
Is, is the way I understand.
That's the latest understanding.
So then if they lay down the local law in such a way that does not take care of the zoning apartments not met, then what do we do?
Cross that bridge from the country.
Well, why not give them a little information?
We are giving them information and I think they will make a decision. I believe that they're ready to move on and read their local law.
So if, if I'm understanding this correctly, the, you're talking about the Vulcan use regulations and things like that that aren't really yet spelled out in the workforce housing zoning districts, the 125 64.4 section of the, of the zoning code. Because they can't make changes to that without having hearings and actually changing the zoning. And if they were to tailor the zoning to this specific site, that's spot zoning, right?
Yes, but not illegal spot zoning.
From what I understand, in order for it to be legal or legitimate, it has to, the, the changes have to support the broader policies of the town that's stated in the comprehensive plan and the LWRP. So we get back to that square one, all these things that we're talking about with the, you know, the, the walkability and the development and clustering of preserving trees, all that stuff is very clearly stated in the broader policies. So apart from, you know, changing the heights of the roof lines and that sort of setbacks.
Setbacks, I understand that.
Okay. And also on the schedule of use regulations on that chart, it seems like for the Village Gateway District, affordable housing is not allowed. So that's like the key change that they're making with the workforce housing is it allows affordable housing. Multifamily is allowed.
They're changing, they're changing the.
They're achieving the zone.
They're changing the zone for the work.
Yes, right.
BG is not developing.
Under BG, it, it, the work, or the affordable housing is not permitted and the multifamily is. And you could get even more density. I think that was mentioned in one of their meetings that while if you did just with just multifamily housing, we could get a few more units out of there.
Yes, but that's true.
But I think essentially we have, you know, the housing challenges can develop further if there's, if the prices are astronomical on them and we're back into some of that challenge. You know, I think some of the idea is how do we create a little housing balance, a little, you know, opportunity to leave it to affordability, which I don't know if multifamily is going to do that.
No, probably not, not at market rate, not in this area.
Right.
And then you get rough like.
Exactly.
Well, that's, that's not what's being proposed here, right? We're proposing workforce housing. It's essentially a zone that is looking to the law, but it's not been laid down on the map. So what the town board is going to do is take the law that exists now, do whatever they're going to do to it, and, and that will then be amended in the code in the writing, and then it will actually be laid down on this piece of property to replace the BG district that is there now, LWTH workforce housing. So that's kind of the step we're at now, and they're asking for input on where are the areas that we see as, as issues or concerns that don't meet the site plan criteria for moving forward, which is what I tried to kind of summarize in here so that they can take that into account and decide how they want to move forward. So then at your point, it shouldn't require any variances or zoning, that shouldn't require any variances or waivers by the time we get back to this.
Of the things that I felt most important to be touched on, I feel like the memo did a really good job and created some guidelines for them to consider if we do this. I do think that while we want to get really specific on our ideals for it, I don't want them to be distracted by details where we miss the bigger picture that I hope they will implement when they're, when they're considering this. Can it be altered a little more? I think that's up for discussion, but in general, I think you accomplish a lot.
Under 4S, you said that it's, that it's in the LWRP is not here to be conducted, but I saved a copy of it.
That consists of your view?
Yeah.
That consists of your view?
To the plan, to, to the town board. I just have to say, it's, well, it does have a website.
Right. Yeah, that was a comment I received, but, right.
I know I said it because I'm not ready.
Clear this up, anything else?
Jim, you see the rezoning that the town board is going to do should then do away with any need for variances or waivers. But there are supplemental regulations in the zoning law that will affect this unless they're waived.
I, I don't know what they're going to.
I have a question. Did you, did you take photographs on the day that you were out on site visit?
I took a photograph up Frank Cliff Road toward the library that showed the shoulder and inclined. I may have taken a couple more, but I can, I can forward the.
What do you look for?
I was just wondering whether, I was just thinking theoretically that if there were photographs that could be included in this document to sort of illustrate, I mean, Kim and I always find that if you can include some kind of visual media in, as a complement to discussion, that it often helps, it just helps understand sometimes the points that are being made. And I think especially since, you know, I think the board did, what got me thinking about was I know this board did a site visit. I'm not sure whether the town board would have to see the site, so I was wondering whether, but I don't want to complicate things. I just thought there might be some pictures around from that.
It's almost hard to make, to take them because it's so forested.
Yep.
You know, you have to take them from some distance so you see the...
Yeah, creating context is difficult.
Yeah.
It's also hard to express how steep some locations are. That was out in front of the, where the walkway is supposed to come from.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was just thinking.
What would you all do to see them? Do you have a draft that Jim has provided? We have made some suggestions as to a couple of areas where, you know, we like to see it beefed up a little bit, if that's the right term. Do you want to... I had hoped we could get a resolution that would move this forward. If you're not ready to do that, you need to tell me that.
Do we have to... Does this have to be, I guess, can this be agreed? Because it's a memo, is it... Does it have to be agreed upon in a formal meeting? Is it something that we can agree upon? You know, Jim wants to make a couple of minor adjustments and then resend it out to us? Is it something that we can make a consensus virtually, I guess, is my question? Or does it have to physically be done in a meeting? Because it's a memo, I...
Well, it's not so much, it's also a bit of a problem.
I can't hear you.
Oh, that's on, oh, there it is. Can you hear me? No, I hit that. Okay, forget it. I mean, it still is a board action in the sense that, you know...
It's a little bit more than a memo, I would say. It's kind of, it's a comment back to the town board.
So it should be...
And it does sound like it's a little bit more than, you know, just tightening up. It sounds like there were some comments to be considered.
Well, my suggestion would be that if it's possible to have this become a town, become a planning board resolution, we can convert the memo after this meeting into a resolution that then it would be going to the town board from you as planning board members. And I think it's, I'm not diminishing Jim's great particular authority, but I think that it would be a little bit more powerful coming from you directly as the planning board in setting forth your comments. I think that if you're confident enough to have Jim make the changes to the memo that we've discussed at the meeting tonight, you could vote on that. Say that, you know, we vote to adopt as a resolution the memo that Jim's written out as amended by the changes that have been made at this meeting and instruct Jim to, you know, turn it into a resolution and let that be sent to the town board.
I want to make sure that it's clear that we are acting within our authority because the comment was made by Warren Merplansky that if the planning board, you know, doesn't do...
If we don't approve the site plan.
If we don't approve the site plan, then we're going to get sued by the developer. And I think that's a really bad approach to take. And I don't think it's going to lead to a first grade project.
Yeah, I don't think... I think that your concern about that comment is legitimate, but I think the providing this memorandum to the town board with these comments is clearly within your authority. And then it's going to be up to the town board to take those comments and to do something with it.
And I want to make it clear that we're entitled to do more than just pick out what color vinyl siding goes on the buildings. And I think our concerns go beyond just the superficial and the aesthetic. I think there are tangible concrete issues that we are discussing, many of which are in Jim's memo, but I'm sure he'll add the rest. And I think those are all things that will help the project and might not meet with the happy approval of the developer, maybe like a little bit...
I think six...
Six views of feedback, I think, say.
Yeah, that's going to have to sort itself out, that part of the situation. Your responsibility, your obligation is to provide your comments. So if you're comfortable, oh, sorry.
No, no, but again, you know, we, our review has stopped at the request of the applicant until the law is laid down. So while what you're saying is correct, the paper have that authority. But if the local law removes that authority, then all we can hope is that all the recommendations we're bringing forward are things they take to heart. And so that's...
But these comments are a way to potentially impact that local law if it's not been fully formed yet. And that's the reason why I'm a little bit anxious to get this to the point of completion so that it can be sent to the town board and so that it has an opportunity to get into the mix as soon as possible before other things are set in stone, so.
Now, as I said, time is of the essence in a bit. I am comfortable with this being the baseline and Jim adding a few additional comments based on what was discussed tonight and moving forward.
Would you like to make that motion?
I would.
What he said before.
What you said.
Yes.
His resolution, what he said before. Who would like to second that?
I second it.
All right. I think in this situation, I'm going to call the board. So I'm assuming, let me call the board. We have a resolution. We have a second, Delise.
Aye.
Chair, Sean.
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. It's up to you, bud.
I'll talk to Johnny Kim before something.
I think it's really important though that if you understood that we're not just bellyaching, you know, as...
Well, the other thing that I'm conscious of, and I think Delise made the point right where I was, they are waiting for our comments. And the sooner we get them to them in the fullest form, we can get them to in the timely as fashion possible, we are the roadblock. We are not...
And this happens to be a situation where I think faster is better than later.
Agree.
I don't want this, I don't want us to become the bone contenders that is holding them up. So what we get to them in the best sense now, I think, sooner rather than later.
And I think what we're sending is really valuable and...
I agree.
It might work.
I agree.
I totally agree. And I, you know, I don't believe that every planning, excuse me, every town board member has done an exhaustive site visit of the property. And so getting this to them opens the door for them to go through it if they choose and to take these recommendations to heart. And I would, I guess, if we have some kind of cover memo that goes with this from us at this board meeting, blah, 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 I think we can reiterate that the planning board is available to answer any questions. And we were offered a meeting. And I think we should reinforce the fact that the planning board will be happy to discuss. These ideas and concepts should the town board want to engage with us.
Sure.
That'd be great. Okay.
Also, maybe they could add a garbage at the end of that driveway. So it's picking up quite a lot of garbage out there.
Can I have a motion for chair?
Yes.
Second, second. All right, thanks, everybody. I'm going to... And I do apologize, but we're on... Are we off?